Good evening, Winthrop. This is a town council meeting of May 19th, 2020, and we are hosting a remote meeting, which will be televised remotely, WCAT, and it will be shown again as a film not live over the next week, two or three times at least. Can I please have... I will now call the meeting to order, and I please have Councillor Farino lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance since he has a big flag behind him. And I have another one here. Councillor Farino, unmute yourself.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the flag, to the United States of America,
and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you please remain standing for a moment? And we're remaining standing for a moment of silence. We lost a dear friend, a longtime Winthrop resident, to COVID in the past day or two, and that person was Paul Ford. He's a former fire chief. I don't know how many of you remember Paul, but he was a great man and a great fire chief. All right, let's please. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councillor Gerald.
Here.
Councillor Plakat.
Hold on, I'm on speaker.
Councillor DiMarco.
Here.
Councillor Christopam.
Yeah.
Councillor Honan.
Here.
Councillor Farino.
Here.
Councillor Lonti.
Present.
Vice President Luteri.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here.
Okay, and we will mark Barbara here because she is on. Thank you.
Yes. Barbara, are you here on voice?
She's muted.
Okay. Next issue, approval of the minutes of the May 12th, May 5th meeting, 2020. Do you have a motion? Motion to approve made by Jim Luteri, seconded by...
Oh, seconded.
Richard Farino. Any discussion on the minutes? Are there any amendments to the minutes? All right, are those in favor? Well, we're going to take a roll call vote to approve the minutes.
Unmute me.
Unmute everybody. Denise, you're muted.
Councillor Gerald.
Yes.
Councillor Plakat.
Yes.
Councillor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councillor Christopam.
Yes.
Councillor Honan.
Yes.
Councillor Farino.
Yes.
Councillor Lonti.
Yes.
Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. For our public listeners, I'd like to give you the phone numbers to call in if you would like to participate in this meeting during either of the public comment periods or during the public hearing, which we will be having shortly. There are two numbers. In case one is busy, you try the other number. The numbers are 312-626-6799. That's the first number. The second number is 646-558-8656. And then there is an ID number. The ID number, after you make that call, it'll send you to an ID number. That number is 875-9454-7302. They'll announce that again right before the public hearing. We have two general information and recommendation presentations. And the first one is from an employee of the council, and that is Dick Hinkston. Dick, you're with us, I see. Can you unmute yourself? Can you unmute, Dick? Okay, great.
I felt...
Hey, Dick, how are you, my friend?
Good. Do you want me to jump right in?
Yes, to our presentation, and it's on an update on the water and sewer projections for fiscal year 20 and 21.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I hope that you and your families are all doing well during this. As we talk about the Water and Sewer Fund, please feel free to interrupt me or ask any questions or interject a comment. I think these always work better as a conversation or workshop than a presentation. So I won't be insulted. If you have a question or you disagree, please feel free. The Water and Sewer Revenue Budget is made up of several sources of revenues. It's rates, it's liens, it's committed interest, it's tax titles, penalties, and interests. The vast majority of it is, about 98%, is made up from rates and liens. The liens are late-paid water bills. They get added to the next year's real estate tax. But they're based really on rates, too. The water and sewer rates for fiscal year 20, based on the actual usage in fiscal year 19, which the usage in 19 had gone down from the usage in 18. It seems like every time you make a rate increase, the usage goes down, and the reward is going, have to go back up on revenues to generate, on rates to generate the necessary revenues. The rates in 20 were based on a very thin margin. Our original projections were that they were only going to come in when we set the budget, was that they were only going to come in around $13,000 over what the budget was. I would normally not recommend such a raise at thin margin, but we kind of knew that the problem, the full debt load, which for the Senate Business District, which was in the 2020 budget, was not going to be borrowed because it might not happen timely enough. And that if we were a little short, there would be extra unexpended appropriations in debt service that would cover that. Also, clearly, there's a decrease. The appetite for water rate increases is low. So you try to keep it as low as you can anyhow. Typically, I mean, the rate increase made was in 2019 was twofold. It was made to get us through 2019, and we only had a couple quarters to do that. And not so coincidentally, it was made at the same time to try to get through, fund the Senate Business Full Debt Load. A fully debt-loaded for the Senate Business District is about $610,000. And what was borrowed and what we needed to pay out of the 20 budget is about $224,000. So at the end of fiscal year 2020, I expect that that 386 will help to fund any deficits and other... The hope was at the time that it would just roll into free cash for the water district. So we've been analyzing the billings and the usage all year. And up until recently, we thought that the, or I thought that they were going to just make it to the revenue budget for 20, but barely. Analysis done at the end of March started to point in a different direction. And then at the end of April, it got even worse. So if, after the projections based on utilizing the revenues through 430, 20, the revenues projected a deficit of $215,000. If that holds true, the water, the unexpended appropriations in the debt service will be more than enough to carry that. The reasons for the revisions of the budget estimate is the billed usage is down about 2% for the causing... And 2% in usage caused about $176,000 less in billings than if it had been, if the same usage for fiscal 19 had been used. There was a substantial reduction in tax title, in tax title interest and penalties. And that happened across the board. That happened in the General Fund. The tax titles went down. And the tax titles for water are linked to the tax titles in the General Fund. So when people pay tax titles, the water and sewer tax title gets paid before the General Fund tax title, the real estate portion of it. And those went down. And I thought it was a fairly conservative estimate that we had made on the tax titles and all those other ones because fiscal year 19 was a big number for those, those particular ones. But it was so high that we didn't consider those. We considered the two years before that that were very much similar for like tax title. For one of them, it was like $35,000 a year, $35,000 the next, $6,000 the next year. And in 20, it was $100,000. So we disregarded the 19, I mean, it was $100,000. So we disregarded the 19, estimated based on the two prior years, and it still is coming in short of that. And the other big factor is collection rates. For the last several years, from '17 to '19, whatever the town billed in water rates, they collected 88% of it as water rates. More of it got collected later, the next year, as liens. But in the current year, they collected 88% of it. This year, the rate has gone down to 87%. And that percent reduction in collection rates is, small as that seems, it's $100,000, $101,000 in revenues. So the revenue estimates are still preliminary. We'll be tracking them, you know, in May and in the early part of June to get more solid numbers. But to find out what that's going to mean to fiscal year 20 year end and also to the 21 rate. I can tell you that due to budgetary increases, primarily the debt service, which went up $237,000 in fiscal year 21 budget and the MWRA assessments, which went up $70,000, there will probably need to be a rate increase. So those two numbers add up to $300,000. Oh, and it's important, I think, to notice that the debt service increase has nothing to do with the Senate Business District. That's already been funded and it's in the 20 budget. And so the 207 is new debt. So the total budget from 21 to 20 went up $219,000. And if the projected revenue deficit holds at $215,000, and hopefully it doesn't get any worse than that, you know, based on if the collection rates go down even worse than the 87% in May and June because of people's ability to pay, it could be even a different situation later. But if the budget increase of 219, the projected revenue deficit of 20 is 215, that's $434,000 of revenues that we'd have to capture, new revenues we'd have to capture in 21.
Why is it stopping?
Huh?
Keep stopping for a second and we lose like one word out of your sentence. And I don't know if WCAT is doing that, if it's my computer or your computer. Is everybody losing him for a second?
No.
No? Okay. Go ahead, Dick, continue.
Okay. So that would be $434,000 in revenues that would have to be generated. So a $1 increase generates approximately $435,000 based on prior year's usage, based on the old usage. And about 430, about the same amount in billings. And that's in billings, but not in revenues. So we have to look at the collection rate again. So that's to talk about, you know, broad amounts. And I'm not suggesting what the rate increase should be right now. And I don't think, I really don't feel it's right to project right now. I think we need to like still see what the collection rates may be and get a better idea before we land, before we make any, jump to any conclusions and overreact on anything. We have been following the usage and the usage for, from the very, very... Since people have been home. The usage since people have been home is going up. And so that will probably generate into extra revenues in fiscal year 21. So that may help if we can like make some assumptions based on an increased usage. It might help alleviate some part of a rate increase. But with the MWRA, it's kind of a chase-your-tail kind of a situation because when revenues go up and you get to bill it in fiscal year 21 and you reap the benefits of the increased usage. But the way their assessment process works, they bill you the next year based on your prior year's usage. So if you had a lot of usage in fiscal year 21, and then you would get a lot of more revenues than you had in the previous years. But then your 21, 22 assessment would go up. And if usage went back down to its normal place, you'd be paying for the 20, the higher 22 assessment with less revenue in 2022 because the usage went back with normal rate. So it's kind of a chase-your-tail kind of thing. So as I said, I don't think it's time to, right now, try to say this is what the rate should be. But know that we're trying to track it and we're looking at usage and we're looking at collection rates and we're looking at revenues right now. And as far as for me, this is like the hardest time I've ever had to calculate anything like this because it's not based on history anymore. It's based on, well, what do you think people's ability to pay might be? So that's where I stand right now on this.
Question? Comments? So news flash, the water... I'm sorry. Go ahead. What was that? I was going to question... Go ahead, Phil. My internet connection says it's unstable. But I want to know, what is the date we have to set the water rate by?
I don't, I don't think there is a date. The bills don't go out till August. In my opinion, if you tell the people that there's going to most certainly be a rate increase, I don't think there's any statutory time. If you, I think it's fair to warn them that there's going to be a rate increase so that they know that potentially the water they're using now is going to be charged at a higher rate. But that is not a statutory requirement. Your bills go out in August and you could like say on July 31st, or when do you need to get the bills printed? But I think in fairness, you should try to make them aware that what they're using.
I believe we have to have a public hearing that's at the rate. So... Councillor President? Yes. First... Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
First of all, I think we do not set the rate. The town manager is the water commissioner by statute.
Yes.
But my questions for Dick, and thank you very much for a great presentation. I am not, as I'm sure everybody is not in favor of raising rates. But my question, a couple of questions. You mentioned something about the assessment. Isn't the assessment, we've been told in the past all the time that the assessment is based on a rolling average, not just one year, correct?
It's based on the prior year's usage, I believe. Anna, am I?
We've been told that it's been based on a three-year average.
So there are two, I think we just have to be careful about the fact that there's, we have a Water Sewer Combined Fund, but the way that MWRA calculates assessments for water and sewer are two different calculations. So the sewer has multiple components to it and is based off of three years. The water is one year. However, the water, one year, it gets a little bit confusing because there's also a ratio component of that. And so it's our, it's our usage as compared to all the other communities' usage in the previous year compared to one another. And so even if usage goes down in one year, our rate could still increase if our share in comparison to other communities didn't go down as much. So the, and I can, the town manager's FY21 budget has the summary of how those assessments are calculated on the website if folks are looking for more information on that. So the sewer is multiple years with other components. Water is one year, but it has that other, it has that ratio component to it.
Right. And you had met, you talked about, Dick, on the, you know, which in hindsight has helped us to, with the financing being somewhat delayed for the Senate project. Now, my understanding, we have not completely, we have not completely financed that as of yet, correct, Anna?
Correct.
Okay, so that project isn't set to be due until, you know, next December. If we waited to borrow a majority of that money until January... Anna, I'm sorry, were you gonna... I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I just, we haven't fully, all of the bond authorization for those have been finalized. We haven't fully borrowed for the main, the main component of that, which is the Clean Water Trust SRF fund. But that's because those funds are drawn down in a certain way where there's an interim borrowing. And then when you get further along in the project, you then sort of finalize that financing. And so there isn't the sort of way to kind of capture those debt service... There isn't necessarily a way that I'm currently aware of, but we can continue to look into this to structure those debt service, those amortization schedules in a way that's different than we sort of budgeted and planned for. It's something that Dick and I have been inquiring and looking into to see if sort of, if the SRF has a schedule that kind of phases in those debt service payments in a way that is sort of more consistent with the way we're drawing down. But I think that they amortize it over sort of an equitable schedule. And so I don't know that there's a way for us to sort of change that. And we have been, those borrowings are now in place because we started the project. And so we are charging costs against those bond proceeds. And so those sort of authorizations are in place to bring in those proceeds, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. But I think that some of those bonding was done in calendar year 20, which wouldn't that, potentially, we wouldn't be paying that until the second half of 21. So we would definitely have some savings, and not 100% of it. But I think we will have some savings to help us alleviate that rate. And I know we don't want to artificially keep it at a certain number because that's how we got in trouble before, I think. But, yep, I'm sorry, Dick.
No, I was just trying, can I pop in? One of the things that I was trying to be, I've been trying to be extremely sensitive to is that we've told the council that the rate was made to fully fund debt service of the...
Of the Senate Business.
Debt service for the Senate Business District. And I think like, I know if you, I think it just has to be kept clear. If the rate doesn't go up because you say, because you say you're not going to need that money and you might not have to increase the rate again. I mean, you don't want to, you say it's like 75 cents and you say, well, we're not going to have to pay the full debt, so we're not going to, we're going to only make it 50 cents. Then at some point, somebody will have to come back and say, well, now we're asking for a rate increase to fund the Senate Business District again. And it was, in my mind, I think it was fully, it was set to fund that. And based on, so if anything going forward, it's like, it's the usage factor that is causing the reduction, the reduction in revenues. And so I'd like to think that nobody has to come back and say, hey, we need more money to fund the Senate Business District debt. I think that the council was kind of promised that it was funded within that last rate increase.
No, I think it was funded within the...
Yeah, I do, too.
We're lucky that we didn't bond on time or we would have been in much more trouble. But we were able to accumulate some free, some free cash and stabilization money because of it, which is going to help us with the deficit this year. But I just think, you know, long conversation, but I agree with Dick that we should not make any decisions. I would implore Austin as the water commissioner not to make any decision on rates until we have a more firm grasp on, you know, what the reality is come, you know, July, early July. That's all I got. Agreed. Does anybody else have any questions for Dick about water and sewer usage? No one?
What about general comments, President Boncory? I can't hear, I can't hear President Boncory.
Am I not online?
No, you are now, but I didn't hear you when you said...
If it's about water and sewer, you can ask, yes.
Yeah, so obviously, I think the collection percentage is probably going to go down again based on the fact that a lot of people have just lost their jobs. You know, our residents are hurting right now. And one of the biggest things, before we were hurting, before I heard any of this, you know, before this whole pandemic happened, you know, I have spoken to people who were crying because their water sewer, literally crying because their water sewer rates are so high. We've raised taxes twice for a new school, for a new football field. Our water rates are through the roof. And now we're in the worst pandemic of 100 years. If we raise water rates again through all this, there is going to be hell to pay. And I just want to make it clear on everybody. If there is a way to avoid this, we have to find a way to do it because the town of Winthrop does not deserve this. We don't need this. It's not fair. So I mean, there are things that are beyond our control. I know there are things that are beyond our control. But if we can find a way not to do this, we have to do that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments on the water sewer?
Yes, Councillor President, if I could.
Councillor Lonti.
Thank you. I'd really like to echo Councillor DiMarco's remarks. As it is at the current water rate, I can't make it around the block with my dog without getting yelled at what the rates are right now, much less raising them anymore. And my question is actually to the town manager. I know that you are the person who unilaterally sets those rates without the town council's input. But what other options are there to fund some of the things that are in the water sewer rate? Because not everything in there needs to be funded with that money. What other options are in front of us?
Um, everything that happens in the water sewer enterprise fund actually has to be funded by water sewer rates or borrowing utilizing water sewer rates. So, um, there aren't other funding sources to be utilized, um, unfortunately. Um, as I made in the presentation last year about this topic, uh, this is not something that's like desirable to do. Unfortunately, there's a bill that we get from MWRA and there's financing for water sewer infrastructure related projects that needs to be paid for. Um, as we presented last year, um, a little earlier than this, uh, Winthrop should have a steady trajectory of an increase of one dollar per year. Uh, that should have been happening before. It didn't happen before. Um, unfortunately, there was just some decisions to decrease the rate that happened previously, um, to send refunds to customers. That is not a proper way to financially manage, um, a water sewer enterprise fund. So, um, I'm gonna kind of continue with the advice that I said last year. And just preemptively say, um, I believe that a water rate increase is gonna be around, um, a one dollar increase, um, in most communities in the area. Um, we are relatively close in terms of water rates. And there are state mandates that come into play here. This is not something that we have much decision in. Um, we need to fix the pipes in town, uh, they are in bad shape. And we need to pay the bills that we have from the MWRA. So we have to pay for the debt and we have to pay for the water that's currently being used, um, and the availability of that water to be used. So, um, it, again, it's not, it wasn't desirable previously to do. Um, it's an undesirable thing to do, um, in this climate. Um, it's something that we are exploring, um, and we haven't made a decision on. But that's somewhat the number that we're circling around on. And this is just, again, like this is having a water sewer infrastructure system that a municipality is responsible for. Um, there's costs associated with it and we need to pay the cost associated with it, um, unfortunately.
And just, does that mean that the town council doesn't have the ability to transfer money into the water sewer fund from another account or something?
Um, I, I, I think that is an option. I think that you could use general fund money, but it would be at the, at the, you know, at the peril of the other general fund.
Even still, I think, I think it's worth exploring what exactly would we need to cut in government otherwise if we want to keep the water sewer rates where they are and at least have that option. And to me, that, that's a political question that the town council should be making a decision on, which road we want to take.
I, if you, I'm not disputing that at all. I'm just saying, if the following year, okay, we, we're not gonna do that again, then we, when, what that would mean is a, a, a double rate increase to fund the, the, the assessment increase. Because MWRA is always gonna go up. And, and, and it'd have to make up the ground for the, what you did. So it's like, say you sent you, you know, three hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars to save a dollar. Then you say, and that's a one-time thing. The next year, you've got to replace that four hundred thousand dollars with a one dollar rate increase and make up whatever the new MWRA assessment goes. That, if I, if I can just add two quick things. I think that the, the budget went up two hundred and nineteen. The debt was two hundred and thirty-seven and the, um, the assessments were seventy. And so that's three hundred thousand dollars. So there was a one thousand dollar decrease in all other bu- budget items in that fund. And those are out of your control. I mean, the, the assessment is completely out of your control. And Anna, can, uh, can you tell me if I'm wrong or was, is all of that debt service from state mandated, um, borrowing? I know there was like lead pipes that they had to do and, and, um.
Um, I don't believe that's all of it. I believe the overwhelming majority of it is for that or it's for other priority projects, um, in town. And Steve could perhaps give some more details on those, that those are all, um, motions that have come in. There's nothing in there that, from, for debt service payments that, um, are for projects that have not been previously authorized by town council to mitigate, uh, sort of issues in town that has been happening, um, through, um, and Steve could talk about some of those projects that have been brought to our attention that are, are, are items that folks feel need to be remedied as soon as possible.
Steve, Steve, I had done a little analysis of some information Steve had given me, um, a while ago that, that there's, the state is mandating a certain amount of lead, lead line.
Yep.
Lead line, um, replacement every year. And it would require borrowing every year for six, new borrowing every year for six or seven years. And so i- i- it's, it's just, it's, it's, I, I, I agree, it's a very, very difficult thing. And I'm not trying to minimize it at all. I'm, I'm just saying that this, this is like the way of the water enterprise funds.
Thank you guys for, thank you guys for clarifying my question. I, I appreciate it. But what I'm hearing from you is that there are other options besides raising the water rate. And I would like to see what they are and I would like the elected officials of the town to make a decision on which way to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Councilor LaConte, can I ask specifically, uh, what type of proposal you're looking for? Um, in terms of cuts, is there a certain amount that you're looking for or something like that? Um, I, I, I'm not just gonna, uh, go through the general fund budget and propose cuts, um, to stabilize, um, water sewer. I need more of a specific target and, um, how, uh, we, we'll walk through the justifications. Um, again, I propose the balanced budget. So, um, this is part of what the council needs to debate amongst yourselves and ultimately vote on, um, of what you would like to fund and things like that.
Yep, I'd like you to go through the budget and determine exactly how much money would need to be allocated from other places to the water sewer fund, such that we do not have to have a rate increase. I'd like to see what those options are and for you to use your discretion to choose what they are. Not saying that those would be pleasant options or that we should move forward with them. But I still think we should have the conversation on what other options exist, as unpleasant and dire as they might be, so that the town understands the choice that's in front of them. There is a choice.
So just to be clear, that's around four hundred thirty thousand dollars you want me to cut out of the budget? That's what you'd like me to do?
Austin, we pay the big bucks for a reason and I trust in your discretion to come up with a proposal.
Uh, understood.
Nick, I got a question.
Richard, that's a Corinna.
Yeah, thanks Phil. Uh, when you're talking about the one dollar increase, is that, what is that? To the layman, you know, your one dollar on your bill? I mean, is it, it's per cubic yard or how, how do they, uh, surmise that?
This is, so we bill in a hundred cubic feet.
Okay.
Uh, so for every seven hundred, uh, seven hundred and forty-eight gallons of water, we pay a dollar more.
Okay. Cause it's a little deceiving when you say a dollar increase. It's, you know, to the average person, you know?
I, 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 I think it's a worthy calculation to do is what an average homeowner, um, uses in water for a year and, and try to come up with a number for what that one dollar increase would mean in a year. Homeowner.
If that one dollar increase a year would break into four quarters, is that correct?
It would be for each quarter. Steve, do you, any idea what a homeowner uses in a, in a quarter?
On average, uh, an average person, I'll say an average adult uses fifty-six gallons of water a day. Um, so depending on how many people are in the house, I mean, everybody's routines are different. Some people do laundry more than others. Some people want to keep a green grass. Some people want to keep their car clean and, and do their car washes at home. So it's, it's not a, it's not an exact science, but an average does fifty-six gallons per person per day.
Well, isn't it simple to say, isn't it just simple to say if the rate's around twenty dollars and you're, if you're proposing a one dollar increase, it's a five percent increase. So if you pay a thousand dollars a month, a year in water, it's gonna be another five hundred dollars or whatever, you know?
That works.
Simple math is good.
That's the, that's the easiest way.
It, it is simple math in that terms, but like Dick had alluded to earlier, with, as rate increases go up, people tend to use water differently. So it's, it's just, it's hard to determine how much, you can't say, you know, Dick's gonna use this much water in the course of a year. We know that he's got certain things that he has to do, but he may choose to use his water differently. So i- it's forecasting it is that, is sometimes difficult.
Yeah, it is.
You know, and with, with rate increases, you know, usage changes in, in different households.
I mean, I think we could, we could talk about this for hours and, and I don't think we're gonna, hopefully Austin's not gonna set a rate tonight and I think he has said that. Um, I think it's, it is very, I, I am dead against raising the rates, but I also think it's very difficult to go over this budget, which I've done meticulously and to try to find four hundred thousand dollars. I would like to look at projects we have, potential projects for next year or potential fundings and just cut back on what we're doing. If it's not an emergency, we just don't do it because we can't afford it and see what we could save and see where we end the year. I mean, we're talking about some things that we just don't know the numbers yet. So I, I would like to wait. I, I agree with Nick a hundred percent that we hopefully would not be raising rates. And I agree with Rob. Um, I, I don't think Austin's gonna be able to find, not because of his skills, but I just don't think he's gonna be able to find four hundred thousand dollars in the budget. But I do think that we have to look at everything. And I don't think we're gonna be able to do it tonight, but it, and it may require a special meeting just so we could have a, a good discussion about this to see how this will go. Because no one wants a rate increase. I think that's pretty clear.
So, can I just circle back one more time, Councilor Luteri, on what you just said?
Absolutely.
Just to be clear, um, it's the direction of the council that you want me as town manager to propose four hundred thirty thousand dollars worth of cuts to.
No, that's what I just said, what I just said was I think that that's, knowing the budget as I do, I think that that's an impossible thing for you to be able to do.
So I'm just saying that's contrary to what Councilor LaConte said. I'm just wanting to be clear with the direction of the entire council along this.
If Councilor LaConte would like that, I have no issue with that. I'm just saying, I, I agree with Councilor LaConte and DeMarco that we don't, you know, nobody wants any raise. Um, I just don't think that the budget is going to be the way to find the answer. But I, I mean, I encourage Councilor LaConte to try to look into that or you. But I, I personally don't think that that's the answer to use a one-time revenue from, from the general fund to, to try to put a, you know, a Band-Aid on a problem that's gonna get worse. I think we need to look at the fund itself to see what adjustments we can make in either potential projects or current projects we have going on and to do the bare minimum and to not do anything else. Uh, and I mean, I think those are conversations we could have. And as some of the conversations, we can't have until we know what the numbers are gonna be. I agree with Dick wholeheartedly that I do think usage is gonna be up pretty substantially in this last quarter. How much of a difference that makes? I don't know. Usage is gonna be up, but payments are probably gonna be down. And so, uh, said each other, but I just think that this is not something we're gonna come to an agreement with. I think everybody agrees, including Austin, that nobody wants to raise the water rates right now. Um, and I'm just hoping that we, we're able, after we have more definitive information, to take a look at this in every direction to see if there's something we could do to reduce that increase or eliminate it. But I do, I do agree that I, well, I, I guess I agree with Austin. I, I think it'd be extremely difficult. This new budget this year only has one point two, oh, almost one point three million dollars in new money. And seventy-five percent of that is going to the schools. So basically we would be eliminating every piece of the increase to the town budget, which just contractually and economically just doesn't work.
Okay. Any other questions for Dick? For us, hearing none. And thank you very much, Dick Kingston, Eric Ordiner, for being here with us tonight, explaining the situation with our, our water and sewer enterprise fund and letting us know, letting us know what we're in for. Thank you very much.
I had better news.
I know, but the pandemic is doing it. You know, the water rates going up and people's ability to pay is going down. And, and we're in that kind of a situation.
Yep.
And everyone is in that kind of a situation, not just the town. But thank you very much.
Okay, well, thanks. Stay healthy, everyone. Take care.
Take care. All right, we, we're going to move on. We have another presentation. And this presentation is from a, a team of Tufts University students that have put together a planning, uh, program for the town of Winthrop. And, uh, I'd like to have, I think we have two of them on. Is it Adrian and Alicia?
And we've also got.
Oh boy, we also have Patrick.
Yeah.
Ethan.
Hey. Go ahead, Phil, sorry.
Okay, Austin, you wanna do the introduction?
Sure, sure. So, um, Julia Waller said town, uh, went to grad school at Tufts University, um, in a planning program. She introduced me to, uh, one of the professors over there who, uh, got me linked up with, um, Patrick and his group on, uh, this call to do this presentation. I gave them a, um, UEP project, which is somewhat like a capstone for a graduate school project. And it was concerning, um, a planning department in Winthrop. Um, I know that there have been, uh, multiple discussions about this. It was on override ballots, um, in the, uh, early two thousands, let alone more recently. Um, it was unfunded in, um, the eighteen budget and things like that. So wanted really a group to do a deep dive on this, give us an idea of, uh, what type of staffing the town would need, what the benefits would be from it, um, and somewhat put together like a feasibility study for it. Um, I really think there is a case for it in town. Um, and I, uh, definitely utilized this group to help, uh, me work through this process. Um, they looked at a lot of similar communities and they talked to some people in this community. So, um, with that, I'll kick it over to this group, uh, for a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Winthrop.
No, thank you for welcoming us. We really enjoyed getting to know your community the last couple of months. I have the presentation on my screen. I don't know logistically. Can I just go ahead and share my screen? Is that typically how it's worked at these meetings?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Great.
Uh, Larissa, you might need to give me permission to share it. I'm getting a notification that says the host has disabled attendee screen sharing.
Larissa?
What I can do.
Hold on.
Larissa, if you'd like, I can email you, you the presentation that way too.
No, I, I will, uh.
Does WCAT have the?
They're all set now. You should be able to do it.
Oh, excellent. There we go. Okay, so. All right, can, Austin, can you give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen? You're in my mini. All right, great. So hello, everybody. Uh, we are the UEP Winthrop team and we're really excited to present our findings to you all today. Um, before we begin, just want to quickly have everyone introduce themselves. My name is Patrick Higgins.
And we were concerned this would happen. I think Alicia's having audio issues. Um, but I'm Adrian.
Um, and I'm Ethan Tuffin.
Welcome.
Well, great. And so as we kind of go through this presentation, I just quickly want to review with everybody what we plan to present today. And so we're gonna start by reviewing our project questions. So we're just gonna explain what Austin tasked us to research. And then we're gonna review our methodology, how we came, or how we decided we were gonna do the research. We're gonna review some of our findings from our academic research and some interviews we did with, uh, other planning professionals. And then we're gonna review some final deliverables. I think one thing I want to mention with the final deliverables is it's supposed to say final proposed deliverables. This is a decision you all would ultimately make and we're gonna talk a bit about that as we go through our presentation.
Um, so first we just sort of want to talk about what planning means because there can be some confusion. Um, in our view, planning is really about assisting elected officials and community members and sort of, uh, developing and actualizing their vision for the community. And it's not about telling people, um, what needs to be done, but really sort of providing this long-term technical assistance, um, can really help. And also providing information and studies to create really important, uh, fact-based decisions.
So Austin tasked us to look into creating an in-house professional planning department for Winthrop. And we broke that down into three things. First, what benefits could that bring for Winthrop? Second, how are planning departments in other towns serving their communities? And third, what can they, what can those communities offer for Winthrop in terms of lessons?
Um, so for our data collection, our, our three primary, um, sources we drew are from the literature view, both, uh, government, uh, Massachusetts and, uh, federal government resources as well as academic resources. Uh, we interviewed a lot of planning professionals across the state, um, especially planning professionals working in, uh, towns and cities of similar size to Winthrop that really have that more smaller scale perspective. And then lastly, we looked through a lot of municipal budgets and a lot of different salary data to determine, you know, what is a typical, um, town planner in Massachusetts, uh, what's the expected salary there? Um, so now I'll present some of our research findings to you all. Um, so one of the big things we looked at is a lot of planners we talked about, mentioned it's grant writing. It was a really, really important, um, component because. Excuse me, sorry. Um, so grant writing is a really, um, important component and something that Winthrop's already engaged in the Massworks. But oftentimes, um, grants are not necessarily distributed based on the need of a town, but based on the ability of the town to, um, basically write grant proposals that are, um, seen as acceptable by the authorities. So we think that, um, if a planning department really focuses on giving a staff member who is really highly skilled in grant writing, that could potentially help bring in, um, extra funds into the town to carry out infrastructure and other projects.
Okay, another thing that we found in our interviews with planning professionals is that planning can bring professionalization. And we mean two things by this really. First, planning, um, in-house planning department can offer professional support to boards, the zoning board, the planning board. And many of the departments we spoke to said this is a key achievement of the department. It allows them to consider things they wouldn't necessarily consider. And we spoke to Darren from the Board of Appeals and he said he would really welcome the professional support. Um, and then second, professionalization, we mean that a planning department can fresh, can professionalize the development process. So if Winthrop wants to attract commercial development in the central business district, the biggest thing that will frustrate development is an inconsistent process in a planning department with someone who can provide a single point of contact throughout the whole process that would make it a lot smoother and, uh, easier.
And so following the, uh, the professionalization element, one of the things that a professional planning department can provide the municipality of Winthrop is some skills towards climate change. There's a couple of different actions that are happening across the Commonwealth right now, including coastal partnerships. Um, one of the key quotes we received from a planner in Somerset, Massachusetts, which is on the South Coast, kind of near Fall River. She mentioned how planners are one of the last lines of defense when it comes to sea level rise. And so our research in the academic literature also seemed to indicate that a planning department can help communities that are virtually islands like Winthrop prepare for whatever comes in the future as it relates to rising sea levels. And like Ethan said, that might involve researching grants. But it also could make sure, involve making sure that planning is in the master plan and especially specifically for something like climate change. It, having a whole chapter dedicated to climate change could be something that would be valuable from a planning department. Moving beyond, uh, sort of technical values like development or climate change, one of the experienced tensions we found in our research that we spoke with different planners was there's two kinds of tensions that the planner often needs to be aware of when they're operating in a community. The first is this sort of government tension where a planning department, and this was emphasized almost by everybody we met with, the planning department seeks to serve the goals of the town council or of the city council or of town meeting in some communities. It's really that the planner exists to help the community realize the goals that the community wants and then make sure that the goals the communities identified have been achieved. And sometimes there exists this tension where the planner needs to make sure that they can find a. that they can find a common idea that works for most, if not all, people in the community. Related to that community element, there's also this idea where a lot of planners who operate might not have been born in a given community. And so it's very important that a planner, especially early on in their time in a community, builds up the trust of everyone they're serving. I think that was something that was emphasized a lot as well is, especially if you're someone who's not from town, you need to go to extra public meetings. You need to make sure you're spending time at local businesses, not chains. And it's just really important that the planner finds a way to build the trust of the community that they're serving. Moving on from our research now, we want to talk about a couple of the proposed deliverables we were tasked with providing. And the first deliverable is a suggested mission statement. And so the mission statement's on the screen. And the key elements that I think are important to know is planning is a community-led process. The planner, like we said earlier, exists to serve everybody who's on this call. And so what we want to emphasize is that that person exists, serves this community by providing that technical support as the community determines its short- and long-term goals. And we listed a couple that are on the screen that are similar to our previous slides about our research. But really, I just think the key thing to take from this mission statement is that the planner exists to serve you, and it's helping the community identify their visions, but also achieve those visions.
And so then, next, what does the planning department do? We recommend following. First, the planning department should be responsible for applying for and administering grant funding from a variety of federal and state sources. Emphasis here on CDBG grants, community development block grants. Our research finds that Winthrop is leaving money on the table. Oftentimes, planning departments report that they can bring in more money from grants than it costs to fund the planners. And so that's worth thinking about. Second, we think that the planning department should be responsible for creating a master plan every 10 years with a strong emphasis on a community visioning process. And also in our research, we found that this community visioning process of working with different stakeholders can be a really good chance for Winthrop to clarify what is the identity and where does Winthrop want to go over the next 10 years. Third, providing professional staff support to boards. Fourth, providing a single point of contact for developers through the development process. And lastly, brokering climate-related partnerships and implementing policies to fight climate change.
So we also just want to briefly talk about some of the budget data we collected. We should also just note that this is all pre-COVID. So the way that the job market and the labor market may be reacting to that may not necessarily be reflected in these numbers. And also, we like to suggest that we have a much more detailed budget analysis in our report, which we provided to Austin, and if anyone is interested in, they could take a closer look there. But roughly, we had sort of found that for a two-person department with a head planner and an assistant planner, a typical budget would be about $165,000 to $170,000, with the typical department head getting around $80,000, and the typical assistant or regular planner getting around $61,000, with some sort of fluctuation in those numbers.
So as we wrap up the overview of the research project we did, the key takeaway is we'd like everyone on this call to take, and then anyone who you speak to, is that planning can bring value to Winthrop, whether it's community development through strengthening ties, preserving local institutions, through economic development, like a central business district finding ways to encourage more downtown business, and through climate change, whether it's rising sea levels or storm preparedness. A planning department can bring some professional expertise that can provide value in all those areas. The second point, and I think a point that as Tufts students, we've been conditioned to make sure we emphasize, is that planning is an iterative process that's community-led. While the planner might have a background in an education planning, it's the community that needs to determine their future, and the planner needs to make sure they learn from the community. So what the community wants now might be different than what the community wants 20 years from now. And it's important that the planning department is constantly adjusting to the needs of the community at any given moment. And then I think the last point we want to make everyone aware of is that we think that planning, in-house planning, is feasible for small communities like Winthrop. Winthrop's a great small coastal town, and we spoke with other coastal towns who found it very beneficial, whether it was Situate or Somerset or even Hull. There's other towns that while they are different from Winthrop in many ways, as a small coastal community, they share many things in common, and they in fact may want to find planning as an effective measure. And so we want to make sure that we emphasize that we think this is possible for Winthrop. And with that, that's pretty much our presentation. We're ready to take some questions. I think before we take any questions, I just want to kind of say thank you for letting us operate in your town. I think as we go and build our professional careers, we're always going to think about this project we did in Winthrop. So I know I can't speak for everybody, but I'm always going to be happy that I had a chance to hopefully help your community in some shape or form.
And I would like to thank you, Patrick, and Ethan, and Alicia, and Adrian, for centuries young, I believe is your correct title, and the case for a planning development in Winthrop. Very, very interesting. Do any of you counselors have any questions for them? Counselors?
I'll call.
Counselor Honan is just. I'd like to take a minute to thank them. Counselor Honan has a floor. Head Counselor.
Thank you, President Boncorre. I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor Luttrell was about to say. Thank you very much for that very comprehensive and well-done presentation. I'm looking forward to acting on your recommendations, and great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Farino, I think you wanted to speak? If not, Counselor Flockhart.
I just wanted to reiterate Counselor Honan's remarks in that we're looking forward to finally having a planner in the town that can move our town forward and get some grants and do some things that we've long wanted to have done in the last few years. So again, thank you for your presentation. Very well done. And we'll be looking for a planner soon, so spruce up your resumes.
Patrick, I just want to ask, is it certainly that we need two people? A planner and an assistant planner?
I think the, without having a total grasp on what the future is going to be in COVID, I think theoretically, the more planners you have, the better, because you could spread the work out. I think when I looked at, I must have looked at about six, somewhere between 16 and 20 municipal budgets for towns similar to Winthrop, and it really depended. Some departments had a full-time planner. Almost every department had a full-time planner almost. And then some either had a part-time staff member who also did other work for the town. Other towns had two, maybe two full-time employees. I think at a bare minimum, if you really wanted to get the most value out of the department, one and a half planners at the bare minimum. But it really kind of comes down, without knowing what the future is with COVID, I don't want to say you must do that. But I think the general research would probably show about one and a half planners. I don't know, Adrian, Alicia, or Ethan, if you have any further research that you did in that area.
I think one of your interviews actually got at this question directly.
Yeah, we spoke with, yeah, when we spoke with, admittedly, the town's a bit different structurally, but I think it was either, it was either Concord or Brookline we spoke with that mentioned that they enjoyed having multiple planners because they could focus them on different subjects. One person basically was able to say that you're the grant person, you're the preservation person. And I think they found that to be efficient. But every town's different. And so I think what it really comes down to is what can you afford? And then what do you want the planner to do once they start?
Thank you, Patrick. Any counselors have any questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask them.
Counselor Flockhart.
Is it common for the planner to bring in enough grant money to offset the money that you're paying for them?
I could sort of answer that in part at least. Or you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Just at least a couple of the planners I spoke to, one I can go off the top, Eric Torg and Greenfield. I know he had mentioned that they were bringing in around over $1 million in grant funding every year, and I think his salary was around $90,000 a year. So it's absolutely possible. Of course, I do want to add the caveat that it really depends on hiring someone who is, knows their way in and out of the Massachusetts grant process and the federal grant writing process. And so, you know, it's really dependent on the person you hire. But if you really hire somebody who's really familiar with that, and they're very skilled in couching their grants in the language that will be responded to positively, then that is, it's very possible, and it happens in quite a few municipalities we talked to. But it's not a guarantee. It depends on the staff member being hired.
Okay, it's always seemed to me, I've always been surprised that the town of Winthrop didn't have a planner who would write grants, because it always seemed to me that we were leaving money on the table there by not having somebody focused on grants like this. So I realize that we just went through a presentation, which is going to be a hardship financially for us. And so adding something that would cost seems ridiculous. But I think that adding a planner, as they point out, would bring much benefit to the town.
Thank you, Mayor President. Can I ask one question?
Austin.
Austin.
Counselor Flockhart, just to respond to that. In terms of the budget that Anna Friedman, the Assistant Town Manager, and I presented, we actually used the salary savings from the Assistant Town Manager position to shift it over into a planning department, as well as our project manager position folding into that department as well. So there was a budget-neutral moving around amount of money to pay for this department. I think it was pretty important to have a planning department to essentially sacrifice the Assistant Town Manager position and rededicate the funds to something else. So that's what's proposed on the budget. We don't, we weren't adding positions, just to clarify.
Any other questions?
I do.
Where is that? Peter, Christopher.
I know with all of the, with the pandemic and everything that we're going through right now, the federal government is going to be in some ways trying to look to help communities like us, probably through grants and low-interest loans and whatnot. Can you guys think of anything that we should be looking for in a prospective planning director or their assistant that would be specifically to their need, to help us through that process? If there was any type of federal funding, I know it's something that I agree with Counselor Flockhart, is something that we really should be doing more of. And I think that that could be even more beneficial than you guys presented it to be because of all this, these new resources that are going to be available.
Anyone else? Any other counselors? Anyone else?
I think just to, just to add, just to sort of answer that question a little bit, I think just like prior grant writing experience at the federal level is going to be really critical because obviously, we're not, we don't know exactly what shape these programs are going to take. But people who have been in that process and have sort of seen new programs arise and are familiar with sort of adapting to that is going to be really crucial. So just having that prior experience where they have had a position where they're writing grants at the federal level is really critical, and not just someone who is sort of, you know, says they can write grants, but if you don't actually see that experience, you know, that might be a problem.
I think to add to, I just wanted to add one, I just wanted to add one extension to Ethan's comment. One of the things that also, when we spoke with the woman in Somerset, in Somerset, it's a woman who's running a one-person show. We keep talking about her because her interview was awesome. But what she had mentioned was, she thought in addition to having grant writing skills, it's really important that that person knows how to navigate government, that oftentimes, you might be a planner who's writing, we'll use this, and they're like, let's say a planner's writing a water drainage grant. They need to work with DPW, and they need to understand DPW's perspective on things. But then later that day, they might be working with Parks and Rec to get a grant for a park. And so having that sort of intergovernmental skills and the ability to kind of build coalitions was also something that the woman in Somerset thought was a must-have on someone's resume.
Anna, did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah, just, I just wanted to add in response to Counselor Christopher's question, just to add on to what Patrick and Ethan spoke about. That skillset would be really critical, particularly at this time where the federal government has authorized the CARES Act, which we are already researching to draw down to help support our public health response and other emergency response efforts. However, there are additional other funding streams associated with that act to help kind of spur economic activity. And there are potentially future, there's also another bill pending in the House of Representatives that may or may not get traction. And so having someone on staff with the skill and savvy to make sure that we don't inadvertently miss any opportunities or help us craft proposals to make sure that we can maximize any funding opportunities would help ensure that the community is getting all resources that it would be eligible to receive. Particularly during lean budget times, we're maximizing those opportunities as greatly as possible.
Well, I would like to thank Alicia, Patrick, Ethan, and Adrian for coming to Winthrop, for putting us into your project and coming up with this possible solution for us. I thank you very much for the work you did for the town. Austin, would you like to say anything to them?
Sorry, I was saying goodnight to my daughter right there.
I thought you were throwing me a kiss.
No, no, you wish. So I just wanted to say thank you to the group. You guys did a great job. And I've spoken with their professor, and I've spoken to them about this, but really professional consultant-quality work that they did here. So Winthrop really appreciates the work you guys did, and thanks for spending the time with us tonight at this meeting.
Thank you once again.
Thank you.
All right, we have got to move on. And our next issue is a public hearing on, a continued public hearing on the budget for fiscal year '21. This is the second public hearing on the budget. If anyone in the public would like to chime in on this public hearing, the number again is 312-626-6799. The ID number is 875-9454-7302. Okay, it's a public hearing on the budget. Are there any questions from the audience, Larissa?
Karen Chavez has her hand up. I'm gonna.
All right, well, why don't we have Karen Chavez first?
All right, let me unmute her phone. Karen, you there?
She's muted.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
Yep, you're talking, Karen, here.
I don't really know where to start. I mean, I know what the town manager was saying about taking salaries and putting them into a new department, this planning department. But I think other things have to be looked at before we start looking at a planning department. We have an emergency situation with the Health Department. She definitely needs somebody, and that's a $50,000 cost. Councilor Quanti wants the town manager to go back and look at the budget. Well, I don't think he can. I mean, I certainly have looked at the budget more than once, and I don't know where any money is going to come from. I don't know what to say. I understand what you're saying about this planner. I also understood that grants in this day and age do not always cover the salary of these planners. It was a time where they wrote a grant, got a percentage of the grant, and it would help to cover the salaries. I do not believe that that is so anymore. These people at Tufts did a wonderful job. I listened to them all. But again, I caution the counselors to think about other things before we start doing with a planner. The project manager position that Mr. Chisano is talking about is a part-time position where salary is split between two different things. One being the ferry, and everybody knows how I feel about the ferry, and this project manager position. So again, please, think about it. You don't have to make any decisions right now, but please, please, think about it.
Karen, this, this public hearing is on the budget.
And my comments were all on the budget. They started with this, the planning issue, the planning department, and the Health Department needing money. Those all refer to the budget, Counselor Boncorre.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak in the public hearing on the budget? Public comment will follow after. Just a quick point of, point of order, Council President. Can we just clarify, because we did have some questions in the Finance Commission, and I know Denise had answered this the other night. Can we just clarify that there was notice in the paper about this public hearing? Because I've had some people say that they never had the opportunity to see it. I thought it, I'm almost positive it was done, but I just want to confirm. Denise, are you there?
I'm here. Yeah, I was notified in the papers, a public hearing. And then last week, it was, it was a public hearing for the last meeting and then it was a continued public hearing after that.
Right, so it was noticed in the paper, I think, like, two-plus weeks ago, correct?
Right, for the original public hearing, yep.
Okay.
And then we continued it at the last meeting.
Just wanted to clarify. And unless people are ready to vote on it today, I think we'll continue with it again.
Yeah.
But are there any questions on the budget from any of the councilors? This budget now, we've had an opportunity to look at it, uh, should have had an opportunity to go over every line in it. Does any councilor have any questions or are we waiting for the Finance Commission before we ask questions? Councilors, any questions?
I have a procedural question. Are we going to be able to interview, um, the department heads?
I'm, I'm sorry, I lost the beginning of that, Peter, because I'm having internet problems here.
Are we going to be able to interview the department heads prior to voting on the budget like we did last year? Or is the timeline going to be too truncated this time?
The, the issue, and I thought I made myself clear at the beginning of the budget, is that the Finance Commission is interviewing every department head. It's on YouTube and, uh, Denise has sent every single council the link to watch their presentations on YouTube. Now, if any councilor wants to further, we can invite them into the next meeting or the next meeting. But councilor has to request that we bring a, a department head forward since they've already been interviewed by FinCom and we could have watched that. So if there's an additional question that you have for any one of them or any of them want to be heard, it's up to them to contact Denise and we will get them in. Okay?
Thank you.
Councilors all have that, understand that?
Yes.
Okay, we're trying to streamline it a little this year. All right, any other questions from the council on the budget? Is there anyone online who wants to speak on the budget hearing?
There's one person on as a call. I don't see any other, uh, folks that are online that have their hands up, but let me, uh, unmute this caller.
I see quite a few chats. I don't know if they're.
The chat was, the chat was me communicating to the folks that are in the attendee panel, um, asking them to raise their hands if they wanted to speak during public comment. Um, there's a phone caller that I'm going to unmute to see if they would like to add any. Hi, Colin Person, do you have any comment for?
No, this is, um, Nancy Dowlin, who are waiting to be heard.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get back to you, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the fiscal year budget for two thousand and twenty-one to our next meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue.
I, is it?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and second is to continue the public hearing on fiscal year budget of two thousand twenty-one to our next council meeting. All those in favor, please take a roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Frino?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Vice President Latieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now opening the meeting to public comment and as I gave the number again, it's three one two six two six six seven nine nine. The ID is eight seven five nine four five four seven three zero two. Larissa, do we have people on for public comment?
I have, uh, Karen Chavez with her hand up again. Hold on, Karen, let me unmute you. Okay, Karen, you're, you're on.
Hi, thank you. About five or six weeks ago, I said something about the water sewer race, that it would be a plague. And I cannot believe that a dollar is even be considered. I quickly did some figuring on myself and it would be about two hundred dollars a year. And we don't use a lot of water. We use about seventy-nine hundred cubic feet of water a year, a year, which is not a lot compared to a lot of other families. Um, again, uh, I don't know what the answer is to this, but I think at this particular time, a dollar increase is a lot to ask. I would hope that maybe you could even not even do it in July for the August rate, but maybe wait till the fall, till things quiet down, people are back to work, and wait until the next, would, would that be December? Water bill, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. And maybe even wait till that point to catch up. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other public comment? Larissa, do we have anyone else with hands up? I see we have forty-five people on, want participating.
You have twenty-eight people, um, in the public watching on, through Zoom, um, but I don't see any other hands up. Um, and, oh, I'm sorry, Betty, um, just put her hand up. Go ahead, Betty, you're on.
Hi, Betty, identify yourself.
He's muted.
He's on mute. Betty, you're on mute.
Am I unmuted now?
You are.
Okay, hi.
Hi, Betty, is this Betty Pibbity? Who, which Betty is this?
This is Betty Dalton.
Betty Dalton, how are you?
Good, how are you, Phil? Um, just wondering, have we thought about doing any type of outreach to, um, get grants or fundraising and asking NWRA to help us improve, um, the streets and roads and the water so the water bill doesn't keep going up? Since I have lived in Winthrop, my simple water bill that was about two hundred and fifty dollars is now twenty-five hundred dollars annually. Okay, it's a big increase over the years. So I'm just wondering, because it always seems to come back to the homeowners and to the businesses. And once it goes up, it never goes down. Let's face it, it's like your taxes, it never goes down. So I'm just trying to think about different ways that we could somehow relieve the residents so that we do not have this on our backs all the time. And at the same time, letting the whole public, ev- all, everyone in the community know that you're doing everything you possibly can not to increase the water bill again.
Okay, thank you very much, Betty. We will make sure that, you know, Austin is looking into that.
Thank you.
Anyone else on public comment? Larissa?
Yes, sir, hold on, let me, um, oh. Uh, Diana?
Hi there. Hi, this is Diana B. Hi there.
Hi, Diana.
Hey, uh, yeah, so thanks everyone for this. I love the Tufts presentation, um, and, uh, and, and I think the planning thing makes sense, but, um, that's kind of part two of my questions. So the first one is lots of folks are talking about the water bill, um, but I'm actually wondering if we should be more concerned, and correct me if I'm wrong, about any type of property tax increase, especially because we've got certain departments, especially the school, asking for tons more money. And, um, uh, that's something I'm personally concerned about. I think, I think probably a lot of other folks are too. And I just want to be conscientious of, you know, us, us focusing on, on, on a increase that's definitely going to affect everybody, the water. But, um, um, property is, is definitely on my mind. So that's part one of my question. And then with respect to the businesses, is there any planning even in the works in lieu of a, of, of a planner to bring potential new business in? Especially with these like new walkways and stuff that are going in, into the town center, like building up our, our revenues that way as opposed to relying on property owners. So those are my two questions.
Okay, well, we have brought in a, a person to help us with the zoning for the middle school. So hopefully we can do that process and, uh, have our public hearings on that zoning issue and in short time be able to, uh, have some development there that will bring in some extra money. Austin, do you?
Can you repeat that, Phil? You dropped out for a second.
Okay, uh, what I said is we have brought in someone who is helping us with, uh, doing zoning and specifically with the middle school so that we can get that zoned and sold, uh, taken care of, which would bring some extra income into the property if it's developed in the proper way.
Absolutely. Um, so we are looking to redevelop the middle school site. Um, not sure what that's going to be yet, but, um, hopefully there is a mixed-use type of zoning that happens with it. So there'll be some type of commercial entity there operating, um, along with residential. Um, and then in terms of property tax increases, um, it can only, it can only be two and a half percent, um, under law. And then if the town were to decide to do something like an override, uh, then you can increase property taxes higher than that. But, um, I know people will be, um, looking at the impacts to their tax bills as well. Um, but there's only a certain percentage increase that we can do on those outside, uh, 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 there's a levy limit that we have for that. Uh, so I understand the, um, the, um, kind of being scared of a property tax increase, um, but that will be limited to our levy limit.
Okay, I think you just, sorry, one follow-up question if, if I might.
Sure, yes, go ahead.
Often, the, the property tax increase, the, uh, above the, the, the override, that'd have to be on the ballot. Is that correct?
That is correct. So there would, um, have to be some type of override study committee, um, that would go through a public process. And then the town council would vote on some language at the recommendation of the override study committee, um, that would eventually end up on the ballot and then the community would vote on, um, whatever was on the ballot, whether it's a tiered structure or, um, an all-in type of, uh, situation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jim, uh, Latieri, I keep freezing for some reason because of my internet and I have two different internets. So if I go off and you can't hear me, would you just take over as the vice president until I can get back on? But I should be okay for a few minutes. All right, um, is there anyone else coming in on public comment?
Council President, I don't see anybody else with their hands up.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to correspondence of which I have quite a bit. Uh, the, the first one I have, it came in just after the last meeting, was a letter from Nancy Dowlin, who we're going to bring up under new business and allow her to speak. But it was a letter to Austin Faison asking that he, um, seek an act of continued employment by submitting a request to the town council, uh, for their review. Okay, that is one communication. We have a communication from Adriana Fabios, uh, about street sweeping and he, she's asking that, uh, we refrain from ticking, ticketing because of the pandemic. And I was told by the chief of police today that we are giving out warnings and for the next, uh, couple of weeks during the pan- pandemic. And, uh, there will be no ticketing for a while until after that. Uh, next letter was from, uh, Peg Lyons at the Winthrop Housing Authority. And the housing authority has voted on May eighth that they would like to keep, uh, precinct for voting at, uh, at Golden Drive, at nine Golden Drive, that they think it, uh, they have taken that vote. So, I mean, we're held to it and that they feel that it's, uh, better for their residents not to have to travel around town, but to vote right there where they live. And he think, they think that is safer for them. I got, uh, two similar letters. One is from Amy Frathardill and the other one is from Tracy Talent, both of Point Shirley, both asking, uh, that we put some kind of restriction in there so that there was only going to be residential parking uh, at the beach this year because of the, uh, crowd of people that come from out of town to, uh, Winterfury Beach. And they were asking to look into whether or not we can put up some kind of restriction for resident-only parking in Point Shirley. Okay, uh, the next communication we have is, uh, from Andrea Di Batista. And she is requesting, and probably, Richard, this is in your precinct, that, um, we repave or do some repair work on South Avenue, which is the street next to you, uh, which I believe is a public way. And I think she's been getting that answer that nothing could be done because it's a public way, but claims that the street looks, is in pretty bad conditions. Do I ask, uh, Rich, to take a look into that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, uh, over the years, we've come to realize, uh, through the town that, uh, north and south are both private ways. And, uh, so, uh, I think Steve could probably address that a little bit better as to why these streets, uh, can't be repaired by the town. They have done some maintenance on them, uh, filled some potholes and things. They've also done some repair work, uh, at the end of the, the streets recently, which we're very appreciative of, um, uh, for the, uh, crosswalks and the handicap ramps at the end of the streets. Uh, but, uh, Steve may be able to elaborate a little bit on that if he wants to take it up.
Yeah, is it okay, Phil, if I, uh?
Yes, yes, I'd like to give answers if we can.
So, uh, they are both private ways, south and, and north of, uh, what a private way means is, i- i- it's a way that the town didn't, uh, accept as a public way. Um, th- these, uh, private ways addeded to the, uh, butters of the way. Uh, so it's essentially, uh, the town views them as a, as a common driveway. And, uh, the, the, the maintenance, uh, falls on, on, on the owners of that, of that property, which is again, the, uh, the butters who addeded to the way. Uh, DPW, uh, plows the way, uh, basically, uh, just to make sure that, uh, police and fire and postal service can, can access the ways. Uh, and we try to do, uh, some repair work, uh, you know, as much as we can, we, we, you know, especially where it abuts the public way, w- w- like, is what we just did at North and South Ave. We did some, some, uh, repair work, um, you know, right at the transition from the public way to the private way. Uh, we don't, we don't have the funds, you know, to go in and, 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 and really take on the obligation of every, of every private way in town. Um, I'm happy to do that if there's a budget for it.
Is there any major pothole? Steve?
You, you.
Am I gone?
Yeah, you were gone for a, a minute there.
Yeah, I just wanted to, if, if you looked at it and just were doing up the part of it, are there any major potholes that are danger to cars uh, going past that area that we could do something with?
That's, that's what we did. We made all the repairs, uh, from the public way, uh, where it transitions to the private way. Um, a- as if I went past your driveway. I, I mean, I wouldn't, uh, if your driveway was, was failing, I wouldn't repair your driveway for you. So that's essentially what a private way is, you know?
Okay, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Uh, all right, the next, um, I hope that answers your questions. The next correspondence I received was from John Stanley and it was a question about, uh, why we were putting bike lanes on Veterans Road and, uh, many of the residents don't feel that there's enough room there because of the parking there. And I, I believe Steve, you had talked to him and told him that you thought it was wide enough.
No, Phil, that's, uh, I didn't have any conversation, uh, with anybody about a bike lane on Veterans Road. I did do a presentation a while back that I didn't feel that bike lanes, um, w- were at, w- were, I didn't advise bike lanes on Veterans Road. The lane width didn't accommodate it.
Okay, yeah, I believe it's.
Phil?
Yeah, yeah, he, he saw this in the transcript. I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Barbara?
It's my understanding from the reading of the minutes of the previous, uh, Public Safety Committee that they voted down the idea of a bicycle lane, uh, on Veterans Road because of the safety issues.
That's correct. True, too. Yeah, I believe that was, was what they did. Well, John is still asking questions about it and wanting to make his comment that he does not feel we should have bike lanes there.
President Boncory, I, uh, I actually had a correspondence back with John and he actually informed me that he didn't mean to send that and his email was hacked. So.
Okay.
I don't know, we get to quite a few communications in charge. Um, all right, the, the next, uh, thing is we got, uh, at least, I think, three letters, um, from different people, A- Adam Brusser and Sacco Begarian and another young lady. who felt that they were in opposition of granting any police officer an exemption of age. And I won't get into their letters, but they, we did receive three letters. And they're just saying that we should not grant police extensions of age. All right, committee reports. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Congressman. Yes, Finance Commission has been meeting about five or six, a meeting with department heads, as was stated earlier. And we'll continue to do that next week and we will have our recommendation to the council in time for us to disseminate prior to our, our vote in June. Our meetings have, have been very meticulous. We thank the town manager and the CFO for joining basically every meeting and giving their input. And the process is going well. It's, it's a very critical time and the budget is extremely hard. And especially, you know, a lot of this work was done in early part of the year when the situation was quite different. And, you know, to no fault of anybody, we really don't know what the final numbers are going to be for the state. And we probably won't know until after we pass the budget. But we are on track and we will, we will have our report to the, to the council in the time we have.
The Finance Commission is made up of, of your Finance Committee and the Citizens Finance Committee. Is that correct?
Correct. It is chaired by Bob, it's chaired by Bob Nguyen, who has been incredible and is an invaluable asset to the town. It's a combination of our Finance Committee, which is three, and the Finance Commission, the Citizens Finance Commission, which makes up the Finance Commission for the town.
Correct. Okay, and do you have an idea as to when a recommendation will be coming to the whole council?
We will have a recommendation to you at our next meeting.
At the first meeting in June rather than the second? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Next is Appointments Committee. So before I go back to Millerfield, so.
Yeah, but. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have more? No, Appointments Committee is going to be up next because you're going to do both Millerfield and SBAC because you had a meeting with SBAC and we did quite a bit at that meeting. Okay. So Appointments Committee.
Yeah, thanks, President Boncory. The town, the Appointments Committee, our job was to focus on the town council employee evaluations. First off, let me say, I did get, have some correspondence and heard from a couple of councilors who were disappointed that it wasn't done councilwide this year, that we were the only ones doing the evaluation. So I just wanted, I wanted to at least state that because I deserve they had their right to be heard. But that being said, we were tasked with a job and we, we did our job and I'm pretty proud of the job that we did. I think Barbara and Stephen did a great job as well. We did not focus on the past. So for example, before we were on the council had no effect on the evaluations or the grades that anybody was given. We, the performance was based on the evaluation forms that the employees filled out as well as our personal interaction with them since the time we have been on the council. In this case, that would be me since July and that would be Barbara and Stephen since January. Let me, for example, we can't judge somebody based on something beforehand. That's why I abstained the last time around because I did not have the experience working with any of them. The review process was pretty straightforward. The evaluation forms were sent to the employees. They had roughly a week to complete the forms. After that, we met and we went over the forms and we drafted a new set of recommendations and based their performance, like I said, on their personal evaluation, the goals they had set, whether, whether they had met them and set new goals going forward. And the goals we set going forward, we tried to make them measurable. So it could be pretty clear whether they met them or not. Sometimes that's not always the case as we discussed at length, is that sometimes things change and that has to be taken into account. I do want to commend the town employees, Austin, Denise and Carla. We actually think, especially during a pandemic, I, we actually think they've really stepped up to the plate and done a good job. We have sent the drafts of the evaluations to all the town council members and the grades that we gave them. We gave Carla and Austin fours out of five and Denise, we gave a four point five out of five. I want to be clear that these grades, they are not competing against each other. They are completely different positions. It is based on their own personal performance. Our committee's recommendation is to approve these drafts.
All right, are you making that as a motion to be taken under new business or under old business? Or are you going to put, I, I believe you sent it out to everybody. So I don't know. I hope everybody has had an opportunity to read them, to look at them, so that we could discuss it and vote on it tonight? Because these were due in March, but unfortunately with the pandemic, it was pushed over and it's been pushed back because of the pandemic. But since our rules say we're supposed to evaluate in March, I would like to get it done tonight. Are you have a motion to do that tonight or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
I will make a motion to do that tonight.
Okay, so we will take this up under old business and everybody can chime in. Everybody can talk about each evaluation. Every council can add what he, he wants take out what he, what he wants to take out of the evaluations. All right, then we'll put that under old business since it was, been on the agenda since March. All right, next thing is the Millerfield Committee.
Yes, Congressman. The Millerfield Committee met last Tuesday via Zoom. Had a, had a very good meeting. The field house is basically a hundred percent complete. We definitely have some small work to do and some FFNE to purchase for the concession area. We have a few minor items around the field due to, with fencing and a couple of other small items. And the other major topic of discussion was to incorporate a new shed, which is a somewhat relative term, people, it's not a shed that you would think of, a bigger storage facility for the golf club to replace what we had taken down along with a longer awaited dog park for the town, which has been discussed for, for many years right now. So we did have very good discussion about that. We actually had a subsequent, a small meeting today with a few of the members to, to discuss the first plans, potential plans of, of that golf shed and the, and the dog park. So that seems to be going very well. And the field house itself is, budget wise, is in a very good place. We also did talk about using some money that we will have available to do some improvements to the parking area around the tennis courts and hopefully to include some sidewalk work to connect the sidewalks between Ocean View coming down the hill, going around the tennis courts and connecting them with South Main, South Main Street, which we think is very paramount for the safety of the children as well as the residents walking around the area. So it was a very eventful meeting and that was that. On, on Wednesday, we had an SBAC, a School Building Assistance Committee meeting, which was also extremely productive. So just to remind everybody again, this is from money that was remaining after the middle high school project had, had, had opened, after the school had opened. There is a timeframe in which we have to spend this money down. We don't have the ability, which we had hoped we had, to return this money to basically the taxpayers or the general fund. That's not an option. There is an option if there's money left up to about fifty thousand dollars to return that. So we had been going back and forth with the school department and to look over their request and how it met in what, what we thought was essential. And we were able to come to agreement on many items, including a lot of technology needs, two athletic vans, a sped van and other items, including but not limited to a dishwasher and the life skills room, which was a pet peeve of mine when the project was ended. So this, we thought it was important to do some of these items right away because of the timing that was needed to, to have the items. And especially with technology, we thought that the way things are right now, there are going to be so many technology requests from school departments across the country. We wanted to make sure we could try to get ours as quickly as possible. Another major item that we didn't come to fruition on, but we did have a discussion about and made sure we set aside funds, was to update the tennis courts. So there would be funds from the SBAC to update the tennis courts to make them as good as we possibly can. And there would be money from the Millerfield Committee to, to work on the parking to make sure it's as safe as it possibly can. And like I said earlier, include sidewalks. We also did set money aside but did not come to any decision, but we made sure we set money aside for a media center technology in the library at the middle school. That was something that, you know, we have a fantastic space that we created throughout the project, but we never fully serviced it because we wasn't sure. It was like one of the, you know, libraries in the past were still a lot of books and stuff like that. We knew it was moving towards technology. We didn't have all the pieces in place. So now we do have the funds to make that more of a state of the art media center. So those are two items that will be addressed and we did put money aside for. There are still other items that we have to go over and we will be meeting in a couple of weeks. But those are two very productive.
Jim, I have a couple of questions through the.
Wait, hold on. It was very productive and we used quite a bit of the money. It was, it was very good. I want to thank you for giving both reports. But we had a full house at both of those meetings. So it was very good and it was done just like this, as a Zoom. All right, Richard.
Yeah, thank you, President. Jim, I, I know one of the requests from the schools last year was, the high school was a piano. And it was a, quite an expensive item. Did anybody come forward and request that in your budget? And the other thing is, is on the Millerfield and I, I have the privilege of walking that path behind the stadium and a lot of those shrubberies or the, the greenery that they planted around there are dead. And there's also a big debris pile back there with brushing and stuff that they took down when they build the field. Is there plans to get rid of that stuff soon? And maybe re, re nourishing those plants that have died that they planted?
We definitely are going to look at all that shrubbery back there and will hopefully have some solution to, to clean it all up. And that's more of a, kind of like a finishing work, going through it a punch list at the end. So we will address those in some way, shape or form. As far as the piano, no, the, the schools have been, and I give a lot of credit to Lisa, the superintendent. She, she really looked at what, a serious list of needs that the school had that hadn't been completed when the project was initiated. And she really tried to prioritize them in a case where what was really needed was what was really asked for. Last year, I think there was a lot of talk about that, you know, multi thousand dollar piano. And I think what that, how that stemmed was, you know, the schools were asked to present everything that they would like to have. And I think that was a request from that particular department. But the superintendent did not bring that forward and it was not discussed.
Jim, I have one question. Maybe it's, it might be more appropriately aimed at the superintendent, but are there any plans to open up the, I know that part of the governor's announcement yesterday was that he was going to open up parks and fields in the coming weeks. And I was wondering if there were any plans to open up Millerfield to public use over the summer like it has been in the past?
Well, Millerfield is still under control of the town. The, the school has a, has an agreement with the town on it, but it's still under the purview of the town. And I think with cooperation of Lisa and with Austin, I think we could come up to some sort of MOU that potentially look at it, but I don't think it's, I, I think Lisa has so much on her plate right now to try to, you know, consider even what might happen come September. I don't think she would overlook this because I think when we built the field, it was something that we made it a point to, to say that we wanted the town, the citizens to be able to use it. You know, we have an older population that hasn't been out a lot and it would be great for them to be able to walk, walk the track and this and that. But I think that those are questions that will be answered in the next couple of weeks. I'm sure she hasn't, she might not have addressed it yet, but I'm sure she's thinking about it. But I'm sure it will be something that we talk about.
And in that being, I want to take a few reports, but the governor made some rulings yesterday that have come out now to Department of Public Health. Certain things opened up yesterday. They really. Construction open. We have very little manufacturing in Winterfield, but that is now open. Places of worship, which of course we do have, are going to be operating. And I understand that they are adding masses on Saturday to Catholic Church at least so that there would not be a big crowd. It only one mass that they're breaking it into two masses. And they opened up firearms retailers and shooting ranges, which really don't concern Winterfield a lot, any of those, because we were already in that protocol. The protocol that we have now is that he and parks on the 25th and we won't be meeting again till the 25th, till after the 25th, the first week in June. So I wanted to let the people know a bit about what the protocol is going to be on the beaches because I talked to Bill Smith today, who is the chairman of the Board of Health. And we agreed that we both felt that the curfew that we had ordered and it came from the Board of Health and the council president to have a curfew at 10 o'clock PM. And we both felt that it should remain in existence till at least June 1st. And we will address it at our next meeting as to whether or not we are stopping that. But the governor's orders and the issue from the DPD, DPH about beaches came in today. And I think it's very important that the people in Winterfield, which is a beach community, know that, you know, face coverings are still going to be required on the beach. I mean, we're not just out of the pandemic season just because the beaches and the parks are opening. Everybody will still be required to wear masks when outdoors and when they cannot maintain a six foot difference from the other person. The way the, the beach facilities are going to be used, that there will not be able to be any groups larger than 10 people allowed to gather together. And they should be all family members if there is a group of 10. And if there is a, a group of 10 meeting or less, that is a family membership, the next group of people that can meet have to be 12 feet away between towels or blankets. So if you're going to the beach with your family, and it should only be with your family, and it's, it can only be up to a group of 10. And then the next group of family has to be at least 12 feet away from you. So those are two things that I think Winterfield should know. We are not going to be going any stricter hopefully than the governor, but we have to go at least as strict as the governor. And that is what it is, the restrictions are going to be, as well as the usual restrictions that will be enforced, that there is no pets allowed on the beach during the season, that there well, that there is no smoking on the beach. So those three things, as well as maintaining, you know, face masks except when you're swimming and when you, when you're closer than six feet, you have to have that face mask on. And you're in single family groups and the next single family group has to be at least 12 feet away. I think those are important things to tell our winter people. And I, I think the rules have also come out, which is another important thing that's going to happen on March 25th, is that boating is going to be allowed. And again, in boating, there is to be no groups of more than 10 people on a boat. They have to be in the same family and boating is going to be allowed, but it's going to be allowed a lot different than it was before the pandemic. Okay, Austin, you want to go into your town manager's report or you want me to put Meredith up first?
Sure, I'm just going to briefly give a couple of.
Sure, um, I'm just going to briefly give a couple of, a kind of, reiterate some of the points that you made. Um, so, um, the easiest information for people to look at, um, I believe is mass.gov/reopening. Um, there's a fair amount of information there. Um, there's a good one pager that just breaks down what the council president was just talking about, um, concerning the 18th and the 25th. Um, and that is, uh, two parts of phase one. Um, and just to run down some of the items that may not have been hit on. Laboratory, lab, laboratory and life science facilities, um, offices at 25% max occupancy. Um, there is discussion concerning 25% of square footage occupancy based off of these new social distancing, distance and metrics versus 25% of previous occupancy, whatever that may have been. Um, so that's a little bit of a legal thing going on. Hair salon, barber shops, pet grooming, car washes, um, the recreation and outdoor spaces. Uh, there's guidance from, um, EOEA, um, or EOE, whatever it is, at the state, um, concerning outdoor spaces. Um, so we're looking at May 25th. I know the tennis community in town has been, um, very interested in getting out there and playing again. Um, there's going to be some rules about tennis courts reopening and basketball courts. Um, but, you know, with some real safety measures in place. Um, in retail, there'll be, um, curb sides, um, type of things. Um, some of the restaurant focused things are more of, uh, phase two items. Um, and some other businesses even fall into phase three. Um, so we are really following the state on this. Um, and the board of health is going to be the enforcement mechanism that we have in place, um, as the council president noted previously. Um, and with that, um, I'd, I'd like Meredith Hurley to give a quick update, um, on our current status.
Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Um, so currently as of right now, we have, um, we've had 223 confirmed cases of COVID since beginning of March. I'm happy to report that 151 have recovered and unfortunately we have 24 deaths. Um, those remaining are still currently in isolation, um, self-isolation. A few are in, um, the hospital, so are isolating there. We've definitely seen, not to jinx us, a slowing in the last five days of cases being reported here, which is optimistic, um, hoping that that continues. Um, so kind of balancing the continued investigations, contact tracings that we've been doing with, um, really helping the community try to figure out the safe practices for reopening. Um, we've done a, a fair amount of conference calls with multiple partners throughout the state, um, trying to get the best guidance that we can. There's, you know, we've picked up on some discrepancies that in the initial, um, guidance. So been in touch with KMP, um, been in touch with the Massachusetts Association of Health Lords, trying to get the, some clarification on a few of the items that we know are going to be coming up in the, in the next 10 days. Um, and really just trying to work with businesses so that we can ease them back in safely and with good, with some good transparency and expectations.
Thank you, Meredith.
Chief, did you want to give an update to, um, Jay, you have the floor if you'd like to about, um, anything from your department on COVID related responses?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so we just continue to work as a team. It's a lot of effort that goes into, um, planning. We wish we were giving more time, uh, before we're, the announced of, of the openings. Uh, because a lot of, a lot of it, um, we're unable to plan and get the information out there to, um, certainly our groups, our business groups and, and, uh, parishes. Um, so we are continuing to work with them. We've made phone calls today, offering our assistance to anyone that needs it, uh, to the religious community, uh, and we'll continue to do that. I know Meredith has been doing that with the business community as well. Um, so we're here to support these businesses and, um, and associations and, and religious institutes in reopening and making sure they're doing it right and making sure they have the right information that they need. And we'll continue to do that in the very near future as we continue to reopen. Um, do you, I know there was a question on, um, vehicles. You want me to get into that now or hold it, Austin?
Uh, you can talk about it now.
So I know we had a question raised, um, by one of the counselors on stolen motor vehicles recently. Um, I had just had a quick analysis done for myself, um, so I could present it tonight. So we had three recovered, um, stolen motor vehicles in the last 90 days. We had one more, a car stolen and one motor vehicle stolen. We did have a car that was registered to Wentworth that was stolen out of East Boston, um, that was taken, um, by an authorized person to East Boston, stolen from the East Boston location. So, um, the most consistent problem we've had here locally is people not locking their doors and people leaving, um, their car keys in their car, the second set in their car. And people, uh, accessing another car or driving away with that car or just taking change and loose items, um, out of, out of, out of those cars. So we ask everyone to cooperate with us, lock their cars at night, take their spare set of keys into their house with them and keep it on their person, um, and make our job a little bit easier. Um, we do have a lot of B and E reports. We did arrest one person the other night. We had, uh, the K-9 officers tracked him down. Another person did take off, um, on us. So let's continue to, um, pursue these individuals. And then 11, between 11 and 3, 4 in the morning, we're seeing those incidents take place. Thank you.
That's why we're keeping that 10 o'clock curfew.
All right, that is, that's all from my perspective, um, council president.
Okay, thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda is. Old business, oh, no, I'm sorry, school committee report. And I do have a school committee report for you. Um, there was a school committee meeting last week where we had, uh, quite a conversation and a lot of things accomplished. Uh, we actually, uh, passed the nurses contract for, uh, the school nurses. Uh, this is what's going on with the school at the present time. Uh, there's going to be a senior parade on May 22nd for Wentworth High School senior class, beginning at 3:00 PM. Uh, Wentworth High School staff will host the parade, consisting of teachers and staff, and conduct an escort drive by of each of the 128 senior students homes to congratulate them and wish them well. The, uh, senior prom, which was scheduled for June 2nd, has been postponed, uh, until further notice. Senior class tonight, a celebration of the class of 22, uh, where scholarships that are under a thousand dollars are usually awarded, uh, will take place on June 3rd. And a location and format for that event will be held. Graduation ceremony is tentatively scheduled for Friday, June 5th at 6:00 PM. All of these dates are tentative. Uh, their goal is to try to, uh, have some sort of class night in graduation, whether it's done virtually or it's spaced, uh, appropriately, whether it's in Miller Field or whether it's, uh, somewhere else around school. Uh, they could, with, schools continue to provide remote learning to all students pre-K through 12. Uh, summer program and use of the school buildings after June 30th will be determined. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the governor has closed all school buildings till June 29th, so we have no, uh, ability to get into those buildings to do the, uh, summer program. You know, uh, childcare in, into that building that sometimes has been used in that building. We cannot do anything with it till after June 29th. Uh, kindergarten registration is conducted in an online process and that's continuing. And the superintendent and school committee are working closely with the CFO to try to get the, uh, budget finalized and, uh, figure out what the unanticipated cost related to the COVID is, because there is money out there for schools and COVID relief. So hopefully we can work together with them, the school department and the school committee to get that done. Okay, under, uh, old business.
Mr. President, Mr. President, can I just make one correction? Uh, with the late modification to that parade, it's going to start at 3:30. Um, other agencies that are assisting us couldn't get here until 3:30. So I'm sorry to interrupt you and thank you.
Okay, no, that's great because I want the right information to come. I got this about 1:30 this afternoon. And, uh, you probably have a more updated information than I have. So thank you. Wait, it's 3:30?
That's correct, 3:30 on Friday.
Okay. Okay, uh, under all business, we have, uh, the fiscal year 21 budget motion. Uh, I would entertain a motion to continue that to our next meeting.
Motion to continue.
Second.
A motion's been made and, uh, seconded to continue, uh, the motion to approve the fiscal year 21 budget to our next meeting. Uh, would you please take a roll call, Denise?
Yeah. Counselor Jero?
Yes.
Counselor Plakat?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Consecrator Pup?
Yeah.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Farino?
Yes.
Counselor LaConte?
Yes.
Vice President Leteri?
Yes.
President Beckio?
Denise.
God, I did it again. President Boncory.
Yeah, I'm here, yes.
Oh, my God.
Thanks a lot, Denise. Okay, um.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Rob, do you have a motion under all business on the approvals?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to accept our committee's recommendation to approve the grades given to the town employees.
And since it's coming out of committee, it doesn't need a second. This is the opportunity to discuss any one of those recommendations. Anyone? Counselors? Counselor LaConte, I.
Counselor Boncory, thank you for calling on me. So I'd like to talk about this process actually, because this is different than what we did last year. And, um, I'm a little confused why we're approaching it this way. We're only having three counselors give their blended grades. Um, and as very much appreciative as I am to those counselors for, for doing that, um, two of the three counselors have only been on the council for the last five months or so. And, and since I think the town manager, who I'm kind of, you know, want to zero in on that, um, evaluation specifically, is arguably the, the most, um, powerful person in town government. And this is our only chance to kind of evaluate him during the year. I'm wondering, what is the thinking with why we're going with, with this approach as opposed to having an equally blended, um, uh, rating from all town counselors?
Are you asking that question of me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I, I feel it's a much more streamlined process. We have three, uh, people put together an evaluation package, evaluate it, bring it before us and then any one of us can agree, disagree, add comments and subtract comments. And it's not everybody having to attend individual, uh, you know, meetings with the person, have, having to interview our employees, uh, uh, going. I mean, I know I talked to all three of the employees quite a bit more than anybody else does, since I'm the council president. And, uh, you know, I'm willing to designate my authority to this three-person committee, who are all, you know, intelligent counselors as, as we all are, to, to come up with an evaluation. And if I don't like their evaluation, it is my opportunity to speak. But I, I do agree with them. I might've gone a little higher on some of them, but I agree with them. I think they did a good job.
Um, so at least for me, um, I'm going to be recusing myself from the evaluation of the town clerk. And, um, for Denise Quist, I think that's sort of maybe one of the only thing all nine of us agree on is what a great job she does. Um, when it comes to the town manager and it just being such an important thing, I'm just not comfortable approving anything that isn't an equal blend from all nine counselors, considering this is the sole evaluation that he gets for the entire year. And I'm also a bit uncomfortable with this having been, um, unveiled without the opportunity for at least one session of public comment, um, see if, if there's any input from the public on this as well.
Any, anyone else?
Yes. Um, I, I agree with a lot what Nick had to say, but, um, in all honesty, I haven't even had the opportunity. I did not think we were voting on this tonight. I have not had the opportunity to even look at the evaluations. Um, I do thank the, um, the three members for their time. I'm sure there was a lot of time put in. Um, I, I can't vote on any of this tonight. I'd like to wait until the next meeting. I don't know if I have the opportunity to use my answer.
As, as you know, every council has an opportunity. All right, am I back here? It's like, as you know, every, every council has the opportunity.
We'll ask that again, Phil.
On the agenda for the first time till the next meeting. You have an opportunity. Are you making a motion or taking your prerogative to put it over to the next meeting?
Yes, I was going to do that. I didn't think where you had under old business. I didn't, that preempted my ability to do that. But where it's the first time the actual motion is coming before us, I would like to use that prerogative. Yeah, I just honestly haven't had the chance to read the evaluation.
Okay. I, I know, uh, everybody got them, they just. Got them, so you can have an opportunity to read them. We'll put it over to the next meeting as all business again. Okay? Any objections to putting this over to the all business? And that's a, your prerogative, so it's automatic. We don't have to vote on it. Okay. Next, uh, new business. Uh, the first item on new business is, uh, Lieutenant Nancy Darrell would like to speak to the council and we invited her to come and speak as part of new business. Although there is no motion in front of us, uh, to vote on because no motion's been filed by either a council or a town manager as of yet. Uh, there is a motion process to, it has to be put to us, take a vote to send it up to the state office. But that motion has not been drafted by anyone or brought to us. Uh, so we are going to hear from, uh, Lieutenant Darrell and, uh, give us her reasoning. I believe she's online, is she not?
Yes, she is.
Yes, would you please bring Nancy in?
Nancy, you're on.
Okay, um, good evening, Council President Boncory and Council President Leteri and all elected council members and Council Clerk Quist. I can't tell if the town manager is still there, but good evening to.
Yes, he is.
Council man, uh, to town manager, excuse me, Faizan, if he is.
I am.
Um, let me just say first, um, uh, Council President, I did, um, bring a most, well, in the form of a bill to the council for your perusal. Um, if something further is needed, um, we can certainly talk about that. Um, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you, um, at least figuratively, that is, this evening. For those of you who do not know me, I am Nancy Darrell and I am currently serve as a police lieutenant in the Wentworth Police Department. Uh, my purpose in coming before the town council tonight is to seek approval from the council for my continued employment as a Wentworth police officer past the mandatory retirement age through an act to be submitted to the state legislature, seeking a home rule petition, continuing my employment through 2023. I was first appointed as a reserve officer in 1980 and a regular officer thereafter. I have served in many capacities in the Wentworth Police Department over the years to include sexual assault, child abuse investigator, domestic violence issues, as a deer officer for many years, as well as the school resource officer. I also have served as an advisor to the Explorer Program in the past and I'm a trained hostage negotiator. And, um, I've been around a long time. I've walked many a beat and driven most likely thousands of miles of patrol shifts. I probably know the town as well, if not better than, um, anybody. I've completed over a hundred of thousands, I'm sorry, thousands of hours of training over the years encompassing many serious subject matters. My training still continued until the pandemic necessitated a shutdown in the Commonwealth and beyond. I possess a master's degree in criminal justice administration and I consider myself to be a lifelong learner. I am currently assigned as the administrative lieutenant in charge of outreach, which includes the CLIR program. Currently and for the past 10 weeks during the COVID-19 crisis, I have been assigned to the EOC, which is the Emergency Operations Center, overseeing the assistance of citizens along with Sergeant. of citizens along with Sergeant Chigarian and several members of the fire department, while the town buildings have been closed. The Winthorpe Police Department has a complement of many new offices, as well as many of the current supervisors are also new in their respective positions. This issue is similar to the membership of the Winthorpe Fire Department. The Police Department has at least four or five openings in the ranks that are currently being filled by reserve officers. Recently, we had three reserve officers and one regular officer leave for the state police. Another reserve officer also left for the state approximately one year ago. All training in academies as well as entry testing for police and fire departments has been put on hold due to the pandemic. As a result of staff shortages, our department would be difficult to fully staff and will take time to do so and could be as much as several years. We don't know when training academies will be up and running again. The state police recently had to graduate their officers after only 15 weeks in the academy, from what I understand. We also don't know what will happen down the road regarding the virus. Some concerns that have been written regarding my staying to serve beyond the retirement age is that this proposed act somehow sets a precedence and that it has never been done before. The town and its council has already set the precedence, and very recently, when in May of 2019 and then a little bit further down for an amendment in September of 2019, less than a year ago, the council voted to allow a member of the Winthorpe Fire Department to continue to work after the age of 65 to June of 2023. The same allowance has also been done in the past for a member of the Winthorpe Police Department. This is not an unusual request, as it has happened, it is happening all over the Commonwealth, such as in Falmouth, Saugus, Beverly, Groveland, Williamsburg, Ryden, for both police officers and firefighters. Numerous bills are and have been before the legislature requesting the same continuation of employment. Even the city of Boston is exploring an overall lifting of the mandatory retirement age for police and fire department members. There have been no scheduled meetings that I'm aware of by any of the police department unions regarding concerns of upward mobility within the department. And in 2015, the town allowed a former Winthorpe police lieutenant to go on a three-year leave of absence to another agency. And the unions did not request that that position be backfilled, nor was there any union concern when lieutenant positions were eliminated in favor of creating non-union positions, which did occur. I certainly know about upward mobility as I have waited 39 years to reach my current position. I'm very sure that if my request is approved, that it is not going to open a floodgate of others in the police department wanting to stay on, as my experience has been that many, many officers are trying to leave the department sooner rather than later. People are choosing to work longer now. And if I had to be applying for social security benefits, I would have to wait until age 66 and several months in order to do so. Recently, town council presidents have been older than I am now while serving. Our presidential candidates are in their mid and late 70s. Judges presiding in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts do not have to retire until age 70, and clerk magistrates can go on forever. I am the longest-serving member of the Winthorpe Police Department, and with that comes experience, training, and expertise, which is needed at this time in our department, in our town, and our country more than ever. Chronological age is but a number. I feel viable, and thankfully, I am currently experiencing good health. And I am ready, willing, and able to serve and continue my work in the Winthorpe Police Department at this time and beyond age 65. I thank you, counselors, for listening. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to wait for questions or if you go on from here without me.
I think if anybody wants to ask you questions, this would be the opportunity. I think there should be some questions. I just want to say, Nancy, what we had before us was this letter that you wrote to Austin as town manager, asking him, and this was like dated April 29th, but not received till sometime after that, saying that you would like the town manager, "I respectfully request that you, as Winthorpe Town Manager and appointing authority, seek this act of continued employment by submitting this request to the Winthorpe Town Council." That motion has not been submitted. And I know you know what the motion looks like because you sent a copy of quite a good package of all your past accomplishments and all of these other cases from the other towns, and you also sent the motion that was done for Chief Flanagan. And, you know, that's what it has to look like, and that's what has to come in to the council before the council can vote on it, and it has to be proposed by either the town manager or a counselor. So far, there is no motion before us, and for us to act on it, it has to be received the Thursday before our council meeting. So I would suggest if you intend to go forward, that you get a motion and you get it into us at least on the Wednesday before our next council meeting, because this thing, I know the chief Flanagan started his quest for this extension past nine months before he was going to reach 65. And it seems like you're trying to do this in one month or two months at the most, and I don't know if that's going to be possible to even get to the state house. But, you know, if you want to do let me finish this, okay? And then you can go on. I'm not saying against the law or anything. I'm just saying you should get this going quicker. And you also should put in, like there is in Chief Flanagan's, how long he wants to stay. And there are certain requirements of physical in the bill that he has to take certain physicals, he has to meet certain standards of health, both mentally and physically. So that all has to be written into that kind of a motion. Okay, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Boncory, I did submit that, and I submitted it through your council clerk. I put a proposed act just the same as Paul Flanagan's were, with all of those issues that you just raised. That was submitted to the council.
When? I mean, it did not come in here before Thursday, when the agenda was set?
Phil, I received a copy of what Nancy is talking about.
And when was that?
Quite some time ago.
I don't, Denise?
No. I mean, we sent it out when we received it, but that actual motion wasn't received in a timely manner, and it wasn't subjected as a motion. It was a copy of Paul's what Paul had gone through, which is what I believe that's what it was at that point.
That's all I have seen is Paul, is one with Paul's name.
It was sent, Nancy did send information.
No, I did send a copy of the proposed act pertaining to myself, exactly. And then I did submit copies of other submissions by other communities as examples in addition to Paul Flanagan's act. But there was one with my name specific to me, specific with all of those provisions regarding physicals, mental capabilities, and dates.
President Boncory and Denise, I am looking at my email right now, and I do appear to have a motion that says this is something we are going to have to vote on from the clerk. Please see attached request from Officer Nancy Darumpel. The town council will have to vote on this and then would have to file a home rule petition with the state. I've attached the process of Chief Flanagan's motion that was requested in 2019 for review of the process. And then there is a Darumpel over 65 request PDF attached to it.
Correct. When that was first mailed out and sent to everybody, it was Nancy's first letter asking about the home rule charter being changed to over 65. And with that was copies of what we did for Paul Flanagan so we could know the procedure.
Okay.
So what we received from Nancy so far with almost like a copying of Paul's motion, will still have to go through our legal team for, you know, verification and for them to oversee. And that's what we normally do. So what we have, we have to send to K and P anyway.
Okay, I understand.
Just as I went through the package again, I see in a letter, I guess it's from Nancy, saying an act authorizing the town of Winthorpe to continue the employment of Winthorpe Police Lieutenant Nancy J. Darumpel. And the, there was the act, but there was no motion for the council to vote on an act to do that. There has to be a motion by the council, not just this act. And this act has to be in that motion with the reasons for the motion. If you look at Flanagan's motion that was passed, and everybody does have that, you see what I mean?
Well, Council President, I did look at all the paperwork regarding Paul Flanagan, and I did it through the Freedom of Information Act, and there was no paperwork other than the action eventually that the council took.
I'm holding.
There was a motion for Paul.
There was a motion?
There was a motion for Paul previously.
This is a motion for Paul. See, it has a motion that was made, and
Right, I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that because you had to vote on it. However, there was no submissions by Paul requesting a motion from you folks. That's what I had requested through the Freedom of Information, and there was none.
I don't know, but I'm holding it.
Yes, I know. Of course, there was a motion because it was passed. However, there was no request made by Paul Flanagan to the council requesting it, how the motion was made or verbally or otherwise. But there was nothing that I received under the Freedom of Information Act indicated his request.
Well, I guess it was submitted by, in his situation, it was submitted by the council president, who was a member of the council, as a motion, and it was submitted back in April 25th of 19 with the motion, and then the act under it that we sent to the state house, then it was back from the state house with the stipulations that are usually approved.
So all of this said, I think we can just say that in the next meeting, there will be a motion concerning this topic, and we can commit to that for the next meeting.
You will be filing a motion, Austin?
Sure.
I thought that I had done that through the manager's office, and then the manager informed me that he had passed it along to the council. I'm now hearing that that's not the case.
Lieutenant Darumpel, you sent me that, the PDF about age 65. I passed it along to the council president and our outside legal counsel asking for their advice concerning the topic. I passed this to the council to take up as an item for this meeting, and that's what we're discussing right now.
Right. So I'm unclear here as to is there a motion by you, Mr. Manager, or is there a step that has been left undone?
No, there is not a motion from me at this point in time. I wanted there to be a public conversation. There was a public conversation in the case of Chief Flanagan last year as well.
There was in May and then in September. And as the amendment had come down from the legislature to amend the act that had been originally submitted. But other than that, and the information that was provided to me, I see nothing else other than there was discussion between the council members as to who was actually going to draft Paul Flanagan's act to be submitted. So I don't have any guidelines actually to go by.
Well, that's what I was just trying to give you, Nancy. I know you sent a letter requesting the town manager to do it. Now he has said he will do that, so we will be on the next meeting.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
But this is your opportunity to answer questions from the counselors, if they want to ask you any questions. Your opportunity to speak on any issue that you want that helps you.
Certainly. I'm able to entertain any questions if anybody has, if I haven't included that in my presentation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Lieutenant Darumpel? Any? All right, hearing them, we'll go on to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry, hold on. Go ahead, Counsel DeMarco.
My question actually isn't for Lieutenant Darumpel, but I would like to say, you know, thank you for your service for 40 years. That's a remarkable career regardless. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And Council President?
Yes.
I would like to just say that I thank the town manager for bringing that to our attention for the next meeting. I would encourage the counselors to try to do their homework. So is this going to be an item where technically the motion will come to us for the first time at the next meeting? Will a counselor still have their opportunity to put it off another meeting? We've put a lot of time into this tonight, and I would just ask my counselors to hopefully be prepared for the following meeting to not to have to make put it off again or wait another month.
Yeah.
Boncory?
Yes.
I would just like to make a comment that the age of 65 for retirement was established when social security was established, which is back in the 1930s. At that time, people generally didn't live much longer than 65. They would retire and a few years later, they would pass away. Today, things are much different, and people live into their 80s commonly. So I think the retirement age of 65 is outdated and that it should be changed.
Counselor Plakart, that's a state law. So that would be something that we would have to entertain the state changing the rules on that for. As Lieutenant Darumpel noted, there are examples around the state concerning different members of public safety departments that have extended employment past 65 years of age. I sent that list to the town council, the entire group. If you do, we send it to you. It gives you a sense of other individuals in recent history that have had time extensions in terms of their term of service. That said, it's a state-level rule, not a local-level rule.
Yep.
President Boncory, can I ask a question of Chief Delahanty?
You can ask. I suppose he doesn't have to answer, but you can ask.
Yeah, Chief, a question on the ramifications when an officer or a lieutenant in this case reaches the age of 65. Is, I've heard that career does not completely stop. They're able to do details, or they're able to still do some extra work after they reach the retirement age. Is that accurate, or am I off here?
We have a policy in place that people can do details after retirement. I can provide that policy for you.
Okay, thank you.
We have done that. We have given certain officers that turn 65 the ability to do details, but they were no longer a police officer. They had to retire.
Yeah, they become special police officers after retirement.
Yeah. Are there any other questions?
Is there a specific amount of hours that they're held to if they're a special police officer after retirement?
Yes, it would be controlled by the retirement board on the state and local level. So right now, I believe, Austin, correct me if I'm wrong, 990 hours are about $35,000, whichever one they meet first.
Did they go up from 960? Am I misremembering this? It could be 990, but 960, 990 is right around that number of hours.
I could provide, I send them a letter to everyone who does retire that works details on their limits. I can provide the latest letters to you as well, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much. But I don't think that's what But I, I don't think that's what, uh, Lieutenant Daranable was looking for. She's looking to stay on as a full-time officer and get an extension, but I don't know for how long.
No, I, I.
That's, that's correct, um, Council President, but it is in what I submitted, um, um, till, um, through, um, twenty twenty-three. The same amount of time as Paul Flanagan asked for, as his birthday was in January, and he put through till June of twenty twenty-three. I'm asking through the end of the year of twenty twenty-three. However, um, that, I mean, not stay that long. Um, that's just what, um, trying to envision for me. We never know what's going to happen in our life or our family life. Um, that being said, a lot of the bills that went to the legislature had asked up to age seventy, and they were approved and passed. I'm not looking for that.
Yes, okay. Thank you, but as I said, since I don't have that motion in front of me, I didn't know what, just what you were asking for.
Okay, I don't know what happened to it. I don't know what happened to it because I did submit it.
Yeah, I did see a lot of paperwork you submitted, and I saw the act that you submitted, but I didn't see a motion.
Well, it says right in the act, the date. It says right in the, um, act, the date, um, through twenty of twenty-three.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, Nancy, any other comments? From the council, any comments, any questions? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next thing then, which I believe is new business, and we have two issues under new business. And the first one is for the town to transfer seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars from free cash to physical, uh, year twenty budget, risks advisor services. Is there a motion? I think that has to go to finance committee.
Motion to refer to fin- motion to refer to finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Council, Council President, can we take the next two motions as one?
Uh, well, they're two completely different things.
But I'm just saying with a roll call vote, it doesn't matter, that's fine.
Yeah, no, do them one at a time.
Okay, Council Regero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Littieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next, next issue is a motion for the town council to transfer fifteen thousand for the remainder of the physical year twenty twenty budget for pest control. I really didn't want to put pest control in with a risk advisor, so.
Motion to refer to finance.
All right, motions were made to refer to finance. Do you have a second? Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please take a roll call.
Council Regero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Littieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to public relations and upcoming events. Uh, anyone have any before I go into mine?
Yeah, I, I have one.
Council Honan?
Oh, sorry.
Had her hand up first.
Thank you, President Boncory. Um, we did have some correspondence, um, uh, this wasn't mentioned in the correspondence aspect of the, um, the meeting, but there was correspondence that we received from the Horables Parade Committee, and I just want to read what they sent. Um, so they were asking us to look at the viability of hosting events on the Fourth of July, considering the COVID nineteen pandemic. Their committee is asking us to decide as a council whether all public Fourth of July celebrations will be held as soon as possible. Um, they mentioned that many of the cities and towns, like the city of Boston, have canceled all public events until further notice, and communities which border our town have some of the highest concentrations of COVID nineteen. Um, they asked that the council put this item on our agenda, um, which I assume it would be next agenda, um, and the, um, president official, um, then present an official order regarding such activities a- as soon as possible, um, so that there'll be ample time to spread the word.
Okay, I don't, I don't think the government has been a decision yet as far as July as to activities, and I think you were talking somewhat thing about some things opening on June twenty eighth or twenty ninth. Uh, might be too late for them to plan something if that's when it's gonna be. Uh, but, you know, I, I've seen those activities for so many years. I'm sure they could possibly do the great if they spread out and stayed six feet apart, uh, because most of the kids come one at a time, and, uh, and they could possibly do it staying six feet apart. But I don't think they could do the races or the pie eating contests or those other things that everybody is on top of each other on, uh, down to the park, at least not now.
I do hear what you're saying, yeah. I just think that they're, um, and I think they're asking us for, um, to at least discuss it and talk about, um, how that would be enforced and how that would be organized.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we could put that on the next agenda, and I ask someone to, you know, uh, reach out to, I, I think it's Peter Gobio, or is it someone else that the letter came from? I have no idea.
I think it's Peter, it's the Horables Parade Committee.
Committee, and there are two or three people on there, but I think Peter is the head of it. And maybe we could get him in to talk and, and come up with a plan that he thinks could work without being a violation of, of what's going on with the pandemic. In that same vein, uh, I wanted to say that I spoke to, uh, Rose Mezzachelli today, the Veterans Affairs Officer, and they are planning to do a Memorial Day event, a very toned down Memorial Day event with, um, five people on the stage spaced out, uh, doing, you know, yeah, a veteran, a female veteran is going to talk, uh, the senator, myself, and, uh, the, the speaker, and, you know, uh, two people from the Oaks to lay a wreath, and they're not inviting all the veterans because we don't want, you, you know, anybody getting too close together at that cemetery. I, I think there's room to spread out there, and, and if people are gonna come, uh, uninvited, I hope they will spread out. But, um, I was informed today that they're doing it. So that will be Friday, uh, I believe, uh, Monday, Memorial Day. Monday. It's all junk, same day. Yeah, so it will be Monday, Memorial Day. There will be a, a small service at the cemetery, uh, with no more than, I, I'm told, five to six people on the stage and spread out, okay? Uh, the Charter Review Committee, it has to be appointed in June. I was, uh, very close to having a full nine-member council to, to be on that Charter Review Committee. Uh, I would still like more applications if possible. I, I'm pretty certain on the, probably seven of the nine. But, uh, I have more than nine applications, but, uh, I'd like to see as many applications as possible. So if you are interested in being on the Charter Review Committee, please submit something, uh, an application to the town council, and, uh, do it, please, as, as soon as possible. Uh, because by the next meeting, there definitely will be an announcement as to the chairman and members of that Charter Review and Ordinance Review Committee. Okay, uh, public comment, final public comment.
Just have one question on, on committees. Uh, we still have a vacancy on the Conservation Committee. Uh, have we had any movement on that, Council President?
None, no, we have not, because the Conservation Committee has in itself met, and, uh, they were refusing to meet, and we were talking about going from a Conservation Committee, a, a local Conservation Committee to a regional conversation, con- uh, uh, for regionalization one with the Revere. So if we were gonna do that, I didn't want to appoint someone and then a month later say, "Sorry, you're not appointed, we're going with Revere." So, um, that's still up in the air, but it, it has been, because there has not been a mem- a meeting of the Conservation Commission since the resignation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, uh, public comment? Larissa, have we got people waiting?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Uh, Wendy, you're on.
Good evening, Town Council and Town Manager.
Would you introduce yourself? Oh, Wendy Miller, how are you?
This is Wendy Miller, page, hi, precinct two. Um, I have a couple of quick questions. First of all, um, the dog park. Can you help me visualize where that space is and where it's going to be?
Yes, it, it is going to be right beside Miller Field, uh, with e- exit and entrance on Veterans Road, uh, in the area where there used to be the pathway behind the Little League fields.
The pit, yeah, okay.
Uh, you know what I'm talking about, the pathway that went, uh, behind the bleachers? Up in that area, there, uh, and it's a big opening. It's a pretty large opening up on Veterans Road, uh, where it's gonna go.
I'm all for a dog park, I'm a dog lover, I don't want this to be misheard. My question just goes around in terms of any runoff or anything into that drainage that goes right to the ocean by there, you know how we have that big gully now? Has that been looked at? Has that been approved DEP-wise, E, you know, EPA-wise? Is that necessary? I just would hate for us to get started on it and then it get brought to our attention later.
That's, uh, the carboning process that's being, uh, researched right now.
Okay.
That, that's why it's not open.
Yeah, and the potential site is not adjacent to the, uh, to the runoff there. The potential site is a hundred by fifty, it's five thousand square feet. Um, it's a very good size site, and it is right adjacent to Veterans Road, not where the ditch be- before where the ditch begins.
Oh, okay.
But it will have to go through conservation.
Thank you, yeah, I was just, I didn't hear anything about that song to make sure that was a point we already had out, um, in front of us. Um, regarding opening parks, so I have the luxury of being, um, sort of on a, a mutual task force, and one of the questions that was not clarified, um, in one of the state calls, we were talking about parks but not playgrounds. Do you all have clarification? So would playground equipment be considered part of the parks we are opening? Or are we opening foot-walking parks only?
Uh, from what I see from the governor's office, I, it, I just said parks, it did not say playgrounds.
So, Wendy, um, so we have reached out to legal concerning that item. Um, unfortunately, E E, EO EEA had a call today, and they reached their limit of the Zoom people who could be on it, so I wasn't part of the first hundred, so I wasn't able to hear directly from the sec- from Secretary of the Arities. Um, but the initial information that is on the EO EEA website concerning state parks, um, talks about trails, beaches, um, athletic courts, uh, but it does not talk about like place structures. So I've reached out to KP, um, our outside legal counsel concerning this topic. Um, everyone's kind of circling around this item to get more clarity because, um, this is, uh, one of the harder things, I think, for everyone to really wrap their hives around in terms of what we're taking on in terms of local enforcement and how we ultimately can make, keep our community safe. So, um, at this time, um, I don't believe we were looking at opening the physical structures of the playgrounds. Um, we were more focused on the athletic facilities, um, like the, uh, tennis courts, basketball courts, um, beaches, those types of things. Um, but we are trying to get, um, some legal advice on the, the exact topic.
All right, the, the part of that for me is with the DPW or with whomever would then be charged with trying to maintain and clean those. It's impossible, social distancing.
It's impossible because everybody would be touching and using it. That's the hardest thing, is that if that is put on a local community, um, I have a four-year-old and two-year-old, I don't think there's enough disinfectant in the world, uh, to keep things clean behind them. So, um, I, you know, I think it would be a tall, uh, tall order for the local communities to take on, um, maintaining our play spaces and physical structures that, um, our young people are playing on. Um, is, I, I think it's in phase two, uh, but again, we're working with outside council on this, um, and should have some more local recommendations, um, being publicly communicated, uh, by Thursday at the latest, I would say.
All right, and then I had two other quick little things, I'm sorry, I have all little notes here. Um, in terms of the parade, just so that you are all aware, I'm on the parade committee with Peter. I will talk to Peter tomorrow. Um, it's very hard to social distance children, who, which is primarily who's in the parade. I'm not about canceling everything, but at the same time, I would not want any of us to be liable for any of the children getting sick or adults getting sick, and how do we then prevent people? Because people do come from out of Winthrop to this event, and that was part of the concern, and I know we can discuss it more next week, uh, the next meeting. Um, but in terms of the parade itself and the fireworks, that's kind of like the Fourth of July celebrations. That's what we're looking to get some action and, and input from the council. Um, and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to get back to me on the, um, email that the committee forwarded. My cell phone number's on there and my email as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Wendy. Any other public comment do we have, Larissa?
Yes, we do, um, Sarko? Let me just try to unmute.
Hello?
Yep, you're all set, you're on.
Hi, Sarko, Gary, identify yourself, please.
Hello, uh, President and, uh, council members and, uh, uh, town manager and all support staff that are making this possible. My name is Sarko Gergerian, I'm a sergeant with the Winthrop Police Department. I've been on about ten years. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to be before you in regards to the matter that was presented to you by Lieutenant Nancy Dal Rimple. I want to highlight to start that the request that she has presented to the council is to bypass law. I want to firmly establish that I'm here to ask the council to follow established law, starting with mass general law, civil service testing and promotional rules and regulations, policies and procedures that we have in place, including well-established traditions. And what I mean by that is, we just recently had three lieutenants retire, one of which, Lieutenant Scarpa, is noted in the transcript saying he would stay on if he could, knowing full well that he can't. I also would like to believe that a leader at the lieutenant level would recognize the harm it would cause at an organization where individuals compete according to rules to develop their careers within a certain allotted timeframe, that they come into the job understanding from day one. I'd also like to share with you the fact that there is an adequate amount of highly qualified individuals ready at the department to step up into positions that would be made vacant if people followed the rules and regulations as established by the Commonwealth. As a matter of fact, because of planning that our upper executives have done, future planning so that we don't end up in a bind that creates a situation leaving our community unsafe and in a situation where they're not serviced. There are active test scores at civil service right now for lieutenants, sergeants, patrol officers. When these individuals move up in rank, we will be able to bring on more reserve officers. I'm gonna focus on the fact that there are four people ready to move up in rank. Not only are these people individuals with goals, aspirations and dreams, but they have families, they have children, they have goals that they're trying to accomplish as they work to develop a career in a department that is policy-driven. I want to also highlight a couple very important points here. You heard a discussion, and in that discussion, there were a number of comparisons that I believe are illogical. First, comparing fire with police. I know some people would like to do that, but they're distinct, they're different. Second, comparing lieutenants that are part of collective bargaining units that work on contracts for a group of people with the hiring authority to a chief who works on an individual contract with the hiring authority is not accurate. It's illogical. I want to also say that this is a very exceptional request. The reason it happens so rarely is because how destructive it is for the morale of a department where there's people ready, willing and able to step into the responsibilities that come at different ranks. And mind you, these individuals trained and practiced and studied for years to score well on. well on these tests, and it costs a lot of time and a lot of money. To say, "You wait your turn, maybe next time, buddy," is just inappropriate and unfair. I want to also point out to you that when you're comparing a non-union position like a chief with a union position like a lieutenant and lower, bound by civil service testing rules and regulations, you start running into foul ground, dangerous territory with landmines. If this is allowed, it will cause an explosion at our department, it will harm individuals. Another thing that I want to point out is comparing police officers to random industries and professions like judges and other jobs, let it be investment brokers, and you can come up with whatever you want, is also inaccurate and illogical. As a matter of fact, the federal age of retirement for law enforcement is much, much lower than sixty-five. I believe it may be fifty or fifty-five. I want to also indicate to you something that came up. We have policies in place for people to stay on as special officers and continue giving back to the community, working details, interacting with the other officers, guiding them, training them, and mentoring them. If that's the goal, I would argue that that is the way that a lieutenant would do it, to not harm the people they're trying to mentor with their experience. If you want to change the law, somebody said, "Take it up with the state." I have to agree with that statement. Another concern is there are retirement board rules in play here. I want to highlight the fact that in the ten years I've been with a department, the past five, I've worked directly with the chief's office in the Public Health Department to develop the recovery team, the Community Impact Unit. Our police department is policy-driven. I helped develop the policy that guides the recovery team.
Sarko, I don't want to interrupt you, but we only have three minutes to speak in public comment, I've let you go a little minute, so would you just finish up? You'll have another opportunity to speak at the next meeting.
Absolutely, sir. In closing, I want to say what we heard is an attempt to use a chief of fires argument, like a Lego block, to stay for a lieutenant of police. I don't think this argument works. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other people waiting to speak on public comment?
We have a caller. Hi, caller, you're unmuted.
Hi, would you please identify yourself? Hello? Hi, would you try to speak into the microphone and identify yourself? Hello? Did we lose that call?
They're still on, but maybe they don't have anything to say. Okay, they disconnected.
Okay, is there anyone else on public comment? I see it looks like we have five question and answer situations, too.
Some of the questions that were asked were from Laura Plummer, she was looking for copies of presentations in different correspondence that was mentioned in the meeting, she works for the transcript.
Okay.
And then a comment from Betty Dalton about the Tufts Team presentation, she enjoyed it, it was informed, she was informative, and she hopes the town council looks into their recommendation to help with grant writing and banner.
Okay, I see that. Okay. Are you going to take care of getting those reports, too, Laura?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, and I see the other people were Sarko who spoke and Betty who spoke. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on public comment?
Yep, hold on one second, we have Kurt Millar, you're on.
Hi, how's everybody doing tonight?
Good, Kurt.
I just have a question. Online lately, there's been a lot of chatter about how we can help our businesses down the center. I know with just, with the CBD going on and the amount of work and the infrastructure, it could be logistically kind of a nightmare, but is there any possibility that any of you are thinking on how we could help the businesses down there? A lot of towns are opening up streets, parking spaces, to try and help the businesses while keeping the social distancing, mainly for the restaurants, I guess you could say, to help their businesses. Is there any thought?
Yeah, we've been thinking a lot about it, Kurt, but we only can go with what the governor recommends, and the governor's not opening any restaurants yet for takeout, and he wouldn't even open them for outdoor, because I had a plan that if he had opened them for outdoor, he was going to attempt to get the town to open up, you know, the Hagman Road extension for outdoor dining and ask all four restaurants that are butted to be able to use it and set tables out there. But you can't go lenient, more lenient than what the governor's done. And until the governor says outdoor dining is allowed, or indoor dining is allowed, we cannot do anything to help those people. We have plenty of parking in the center with that middle aisle now, I see the cars parked there all the time. So, I mean, I don't know if we got a lack of parking, it's just we got a lack of stores that can be opened, so there's not much we can do.
Yeah, I understand that point. For me, it's more the preparation for like the phasing of it, so when it does come time that we're all ready to go for the businesses and they don't have to jump through hoops to try and pull a permit or find out how it can be done, that's, I think that's where I'm leading to.
I have spoken, I talked a little bit with Betsy Shane about this, about how we could look into an outdoor dining ordinance, I know it's something that we have done, we've talked about a lot, I know before I was on the council, but, and I think it should be done as quickly as we can, but we want to do it the right way. So I am planning on having a Rules and Ordinances Committee meeting to review an ordinance potentially, so that once we do get the green light from the governor's office about when they can open, I'd like to make it so that they can, you know, go through whatever process, the quickest process that we can in order to accommodate these businesses' needs, just because I think that it's, scientifically, it's safer to be outside because of air circulation and everything, and I think that it's important to the small business owners who are definitely struggling during this time that we get something like this done. And it's not a new topic in town, it's something that I've heard a lot of, so it's not just a COVID-related thing, it's something that the town needs to be proactive about, you know, whether or not the center's in a bad condition right now, I think is irrelevant. I think we need to make as many options for our businesses as possible.
We agree, and I think Austin will be talking with the licensing board and with the Board of Health, and if the opportunity arises, we'll be able to work with both of those committees who have to weigh in on it to get this done.
Absolutely, this is our phase two item, we're going to be working hard on this with K P to figure out kind of the different voting mechanisms that you all can take to try to help some of the businesses in the Center Business District out, once we're kind of ramping things back up. But we'll have these lined up for you and we're more than happy to have these conversations.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kurt. Anyone else on public comment? Do we have anyone else?
Don't see any other hands being raised for public comment.
Okay, do we have any other question and answers or chats?
I just got an announcement of a public comment.
Go ahead, you have the floor, Robert.
I just want to make an announcement that I'm going to be having a virtual town hall on Thursday night at seven thirty, open discussion, anybody from the public, any topic you want to talk about, please feel free to call in.
Any other comments? Anyone else that entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm surprised, one last thing, sorry, sorry, my fault. Win twenty thirty is having their first public meeting on Saturday, May thirtieth, it's going to be from one PM to two thirty PM. It's on the town website, but the website to register for the Zoom meeting is m a p c dot m a forward slash win twenty thirty. Any more information that you need, just feel free to reach out to my office, but again, this is the start of a big visioning process. Some of the things that Councilor Christopher was just talking to about what we want the center to look like outside of COVID, and when life returns to some form of normalcy, hopefully in the nearer term than longer term, we want to make sure the community is on board with all these decisions that we're making, so this is going to be a great opportunity to kind of take the pulse of the community and get an understanding of what we want to try to move towards in terms of like a master planning process and things like that.
The town is sad, do you have?
That was actually the advisory committee that's working with Win twenty thirty, who's Wendy Millar Page is actually on that, Julie Rollers, Peter Christopher, some others, I think Tracy's on it as well, had kind of come to a consensus on. Honestly, there's no perfect time for this, but I think they thought that was the time that they could have the most people participate, and, you know, if it doesn't work, we'll hold another one, and we'll keep holding them until we get a lot of people's input on this stuff.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go in two seconds.
Denise, anything? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Farino, to adjourn, would please take a roll call?
Councilor Agiero?
Yes.
Councilor Flahcat?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Farino?
Yes.
Councilor LaConti?
Yes.
Vice President Latieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Absolutely, yes. Everyone, please be safe, thank you for participating, thank you for everything you do for the town, be safe, wear your mask outside. Thank you.